51 West Center Street in Provo. This is the Provo Municipal Council. This meeting is broadcast live on the web, on the Provo City Council YouTube channel, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. Please be aware that microphones in the room pick up the noise of paper and other rustling objects. Further, be aware that the microphones can pick up side conversations. So we'll start with a roll call.
Cliff Strachan.
Brian Jones.
Chad Nelford.
Travis Hoven.
Elizabeth Vanderwerken.
George Handley.
David Hardy.
Paul Magnus.
Dave School.
Mayor Kusci.
Lynn Parker.
And Mr. Shifley texted and said that he was on his way.
And we are also excusing Mr. Fillmore for a family situation. He should be joining us, or possibly by conference call. We'll begin with an opening prayer by David Morris.
Father, Mother, Madam, we are thankful for this time to be here together as elected officials and staff of Provo City to discuss the important needs of citizens and citizens. We pray that the presenters today will be able to get their message across clearly, that good discussion we have and some good decisions we made. We're grateful for all of us to have, especially for the opportunity to work for and serve citizens in Provo. We pray for these things that may just happen today.
Thank you. All right. It is proposed that we approve the following minutes from October 29th, work meeting. These are from 2019, November 12th work meeting, November 19th work meeting, December 10th work meeting, and first notes for this new council on January 7th work meeting. Are there any objections?
I did.
Are there any objections or requested changes to these minutes? Okay, seeing no objection, I declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those seated at the council table may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. We'll start with a presentation by Cliff Strachan.
Elizabeth, will you join me up here? This amazing Elizabeth Vanderwerken has been with the city now for five years. And so it's customary that we give her this nice certificate.
Thank you.
And even nicer blanket. Elizabeth, thank you for your service here.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for all that you do for us.
You can use that blanket when you're quarantined for coronavirus.
All right, we'll start with item number one, a presentation regarding the Provo Police What does FYI stand for again?
Fiscal Year.
Fiscal Year, yeah, sorry.
Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Budget. This will be presented by Chief Ferguson.
Thank you for having us today. I'm Chief Ferguson. I brought with me Captain Wolken, and Captain Post will also be presenting. It's a pleasure to be with you today.
You gotta wait a minute to scroll down, like, uh, it's got your phone.
While we're waiting for that to download, I'd just say this, that this presentation that we're going to give will answer questions as what the police department is doing to help the city achieve the goals listed in the general plan, which goals and objectives we feel we could do more with if given more, areas important to our mission that are underfunded or unfunded, and we will explain what we were able to accomplish last year with our And we're well aware of your time and your agenda today, and we will try to keep this as brief as possible. Oh, are we good now? I think it's important to begin, especially with four of our council members being new to the council, and congratulations, by the way, on your terms, we look forward to working with you, that I give a little bit of history about the police department, our philosophies, our strategies in crime fighting, and the things that we do in the Provo Police Department that make us one of the safest cities in our nation, and something that we're very proud of. And so...
Might not be turned on. Sometimes you have to open that door.
The door, it shouldn't matter. Plump in the button, Captain.
Is the safety on?
I'm gonna change the batteries.
Can someone manually work it for him? Can someone manually work it?
Yeah, John, come here, Ben.
Okay, let's manually work it for it.
Some of the ways we're achieving our goals. To start with, I'd like to read our mission statement to you. This mission statement was created a few years ago, before I was chief, but I've been a member of this police department for 29 years now, and I'm very proud of our mission statement, and I believe that it's probably the strongest mission statement I've heard of any police department in the nation. And it says, "We work with our citizens to improve the quality of life, solve problems, safeguard liberties, and stop crime. We provide proactive service in a professional and compassionate manner." And the things that we're going to talk about right now, if you can remember that statement, I think you'll see that happening right here. Of the 34 neighborhoods in the city, every neighborhood has police officers dedicated to it. We're a community-based policing department. So from day one, when an officer hires on with the Provo Police Department, they're issued one of the neighborhoods. And so the theory is, is that if you're a brand-new officer in Provo, we want to make you the best professional we can. So if we give you the Mazur neighborhood, and you learn everything there is to know about Carl Mazur, and why that neighborhood is called Mazur, and you start to get to know the people in that neighborhood, and when you're driving that neighborhood, and you get out of your car and introduce yourself as such, the belief is, and what we have seen happen is, when those families are in their crucible moment of their life, when they need police, or when they need some advice, they remember that officer who got out of their car and served them. And we have great benefit from that. So every one of our neighborhoods have a police officer attached. Our department's organization chart, of the 115 police officers and 35 civilian staff, they're dispersed between four divisions. Our patrol division, which is our largest division, our support services division, which is made up mostly of our civilian staff, our criminal investigations division, our detective division, and our special operations division. Without going too much further, let me say this. Two years ago, I came before this group, and it told you that our facility that we're operating out of was in failure mode. And I couldn't be more grateful as a chief that the council and the mayor listened to this, and that with the help of Chief Miguel, Mayor Kusci, and others, and the unanimous support of the council, that we're able to successfully get the bond for a new building. I have worked for the last year weekly with the architects, and I am confident that what they're going to deliver to us is going to be a state-of-the-art public safety facility that will work efficiently. All of our divisions will be housed in the right places and effectively, and I believe that this building, no doubt, will take us many years into our future, and be a great thing for the citizens of Provo. So I always say thank you to all of you. Back to our four divisions. The special operations division consists of our major crimes and our SET teams. Those are our narcotics teams. They identify the worst in our communities, and they dismantle organizations. Our school resource officers, we have a very strong bond with our schools, our police officers do, police department does. And our community-oriented policing department, which some of you may have had contact with over the years, our community-oriented policing teams. Our special events is assigned there as well as our volunteers. Last year, our narcotics officers, and I'm going to brag a little bit about the members of our department right now in the next couple of minutes, when I tell you that last year our narcotics teams took off 65 pounds of heroin, 285 pounds of methamphetamine, 33 pounds of cocaine, over 400 pounds, almost 500 pounds of marijuana, and seized $525,000 almost, and funds that were ill-gotten gain, and that was seized. Total street value of narcotics was $21,000. I mean, to clear it into perspective, this was narcotics that was seized throughout the county, that all had a nexus to Provo, and our officers participate in this countywide task force that goes out and takes these things down. I would dare to say that most of us have had a family member, or a friend, or colleague somewhere who was infected by controlled substances and abuse, and we've seen the spiraling effect that that has. When you see 65 pounds of heroin, remember that it only takes a little chip of heroin for somebody to go out and purchase that for $15 or $20 to get their high for a few hours. And the way they get that money is they go and they steal from our cars at night, and they do other things at night. And so for all of the drugs that were taken off the street, those are crimes that did not happen because they weren't able to go purchase those drugs. So it's a ripple effect, and it has a great impact on our society.
I noticed the zero on spice. Not a focus, or just we're not seeing it anymore?
It's not seeing as much of it. It's still out there. It just has so many strains now, strands that are legal and unidentified, we just don't see a whole lot of it, and we're not targeting it for safe. Our commitment to our schools is strong. As a matter of fact, it's probably the strongest commitment to schools of any police department that I know of, in this valley certainly. We have an officer in each of our high schools. We also have an officer in each of our junior highs, and those officers are responsible for objective 5.4.6, and that is that we deliver the DARE program. That's what it says in the general plan. We no longer teach DARE, we've now moved to a program called NOVA, and at the same basis, we teach it to elementary-school-aged children, we give them the warnings about things that are to come. Something unique that happened that we will address in a few minutes when we get a little further into this, though, that's key to this slide. During the year, the school board came to myself and my staff and proposed that we have a full-time officer in Centennial Junior High, where at the beginning of this year, we only had a sergeant there. And so that sergeant had double duty. He not only covered Centennial Junior High and the crimes that occurred there, he was also tasked with going around to other schools and supervising his staff. They saw a need for a full-time officer there. We looked at the numbers with the help of our crime analyst, who I have to say does a wonderful job for our city, and we agreed that we need that. And so they were willing to come to the city with half of the salary for one more officer. And so kind of a calculated risk, we took it, that hopefully we can get another officer this year at least, but we took one of our officers off the street and put them in the schools. And so now we have an officer full-time in Centennial as well.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What kind of crimes occur in schools, and why is it important to have officers in schools?
The biggest crimes that we're dealing with right now is sexting, pornography that's being shared back and forth, crimes of threat, theft, stealing each other's cell phones, fights that occur, concerns about mass shootings, things like that, that they are taking care of and allowing our other officers to stay on the street to deal with 911s, but a lot of crime. There's a lot of things that happen in those schools, kind of little cities. Good question. Fulfilling objective 5.4.5, also out of the special operations division, is the community-oriented policing team. Every Monday morning, or every Tuesday morning at 9:00 AM, this team meets in their facility, which is the one that's off-campus here, a block north on 300 West. They meet with our community leaders, loss-achemental health, adult probation parole, housing. They all come to the table, and they discuss some of our biggest problems that are going on in the city, and ways that we can work together to take care of those problems. And so they're doing a wonderful job. They also do things like the Citizens Academy. And I don't know how many of you have been through the Citizens Academy, but if you haven't, I would encourage you to consider it. It's a seven-week commitment. They hold it three times a year, and it's on Wednesday evenings between 6:00 PM, when they say 10:00 PM, usually gets out around 9:30. But over those seven weeks, you get a great shot of what police officers do throughout the nation, and specifically here in Provo. Get exposure to all of our 19 special teams that we have. We have the National Night Out that occurs every year in August, and we have a very strong social media hole. Again, the COP team is out constantly. They're busy, they do things like brats and cops. They also spend a lot of their time dealing with our increasing transient problem and our homeless issue that's going on in Provo, and I'm sure you've noticed that. There are a lot of reasons for that. But you can see on this graph that in just one year's time, the increased number of calls for service that we have dealt with as police officers on the street, just dealing with the mentally ill and the homeless alone. Some of the reasons are, one, we have a Level 5 hospital here, so other agencies within our valley will bring people who are homeless and need emergency medical care to Provo. We have loss-achemental health that's stationed here and hubbed here, provide a lot of services. And we have the end of the tracks, or the end of the trains here, front-runner ends here. And a lot of the individuals who we deal with are out of the Salt Lake Valley, Operation Rio Grande, things like that, that push people to other areas. Our volunteers. Our volunteers are something that we couldn't do without. We have a group of just stellar individuals in our community who have full-time jobs, but they like to work with our police department. They go through a background check so that we know who these people are, and then we put them out in the field, doing things like unlocking car doors, working traffic assignments on special events or traffic accidents, and just helping out in the community. They do a great job. Last year, over 3,000 hours were donated at a volunteer rate of 2543 an hour, almost $80,000 in services that they donated to the citizens of Provo. Special events, also out of the special operations division, which Captain Post has. The police department is involved in over 132 events per year, ranging from Stadium of Fire and the Fourth of July parade to filming, this little thing, maybe people need roads closed for filming things. But we're tasked with a lot of different special events throughout the year that come Patrol, another division. This is the busiest division in the department. They're out 24/7, and this is where our officers begin their career, is in the patrol division. This is where you learn the fundamentals of police work, all the way from a traffic citation or a traffic accident to a homicide that you may roll on. They do a wonderful job. I told you I would talk to you about supplementals and increases that you gave us last year. Last year, you gave us seven new police officer positions, and I'm proud to say we filled These officers were hired, they are in training right now, but that brought our number up to 115. Through attrition, we still are down a couple of officers. We're always hiring. We interviewed just yesterday, and I anticipate we will be extending more offers in the next day. But it was one of the things that you gave us that we greatly appreciate. One of the things we did with some of the new officers is we formed a new traffic team a couple of years ago. We saw that the number of accidents in Provo were something that we felt was a quality of life issue, and I'm sure you've all had a traffic accident or been involved in something to do with one, but you know that that does affect your quality of life when you have to get a rental car or some other, you know, transportation. We thought that we could really affect that number if we started really concentrating our efforts on the areas and the thoroughfares where accidents were happening the most. And so if you follow social media and follow us on social media, every Sunday night you'll see Sergeant King will put out kind of almost a warning from the chief, so to say that, "Look, we're going to be in this area, so pay attention, put your phones down, turn off Facebook or whatever you're looking at, because we're going to be here. We're not there to generate revenue with tickets, we're there to stop accidents from happening." And we believe it's having an impact, we see that it's happening.
So the primary method to reduce the traffic accidents is to give tickets?
So reducing speed and distracted driving? Well, every stop we make, we don't issue a ticket. A lot of it is education, a lot of warnings.
Sure, I'm just saying in general, that's the most effective way is to stop people when they're speeding.
And I believe social media, I think it works, telling people where we're going to be, because I see that they share it with their friends, and so I think that that helps. Kind of give them a warning, like, "This is where our highest accidents are occurring, this is where we're going to go." So a little education along the way helps. Yeah, enforcement too. Nobody likes getting a ticket.
I was just curious, yeah.
But yes. K-9. K-9 is also in the patrol division. We have four K-9s. We have two apprehension dogs, this is one of them, and we have two EOD dogs, or bomb dogs. And with 132 events a year, we use our bomb dogs. We're going to need to replace both dogs this year, at about $10,000 per dog. Those dogs, they've been in service now for roughly seven to eight years, and they were gifted to us by the United States Air Force. They came back from overseas, and they were put into circulation. I don't know that we will be able to find that again, but I believe with 132 events, with a major stadium and university, our city needs EOD dogs, bomb detection dogs. Animal Control, great people, four of them. They were reduced in number from five back in 2008 when we went through some budget cuts. We've never replaced the fifth animal control officer, but they handle every problem you can imagine, from rattlesnake to rabid raccoon, and 3,300 calls last year. They do an outstanding job. They also help us out with crossing guard details, with our special events, with traffic enforcement, and a great valuable part of our department. The next division, remember on the chart, I showed you four divisions, the next is the Criminal Investigations Division, or detectives. It's divided into two teams, the CID detectives, which handle homicide, robbery, fraud, and missing persons cases, and then the SVU team, which handle the worst cases our society has ever seen, and that is child abuse, sex abuse, and our domestic violence cases. Last year, our CID team handled 562 investigations that they filed to our county attorney's office. One to note was the successful prosecution of what was becoming a cold case homicide, an elderly female who was strangled to death in a really horrific way four years ago out on the west side of town. This team remained relentless in their pursuit of justice for her and her family, identified who the suspect was, formed up the information and the evidence that they needed to go to trial and receive a life sentence on that individual who's now off of our streets. And so great job that they did. Our SVU team, 430 investigations of things that are just horrific, that we talk about every day in my daily command set, they do an outstanding job. Again, two years ago, the FBI came to us and asked for some participation in their cybercrimes team. We elected to join that team, even though we didn't have the numbers necessarily to give them. We did dedicate an officer to them. When people ask me where I believe that police work is going to go in the future, it's always cyber, cybercrimes. Matter of fact, this morning I learned of a very significant case that they became aware of and are working right now, that is in the millions of dollars. And so what this cybercrime team does, working with the FBI, is they identify the routes that are being used to fraudulently obtain funds from people in Provo, and then they go after them, because the FBI has formed assets throughout the international community, and there are times when we actually can make arrests now on people who are active as citizens. Again, I'm bragging right now. We're going to get to the nuts and bolts here in a moment. The victim advocate team, these ladies, and they're ladies now, we don't have, we had a man, but I'm going to say ladies, because they are, they served over 1,400 of our citizens last year, again, on some of the worst moments in people's lives, dealing with child abuse, domestic violence, anything you can imagine. And when I was a brand-new patrolman here in 1991, I would have loved to have had a team like this to come out to crime scenes, because they have the A to Z for our victims. They navigate our victims through our confusing criminal justice system, and they do an outstanding job, and couldn't be more proud of them.
Excuse me, they're employees, not volunteers?
No, they're employees. Some of them are grant employees on a grant, others are employees of the city. I believe it's the biggest victim advocate team, too, maybe along the loss-atch front. They do a lot of trainings in other jurisdictions. Captain Wolken is over the operational support division, and he'll speak to you in a moment. This division consists of our records, people, front counter that you see, evidence, training, internal affairs, fleet, budget, and body-worn cameras. Most of our civilian staff are within this division, and we couldn't operate without their help, without what they do. They're all very, have very defined roles. Recruitment. Again, I know four of you are new to the council, and I've talked about this before with the old council and the mayor, but recruitment throughout the United States for police officers has been down for about the last 10 years. There are a lot of theories behind that. No pun on words, I would say there's a thing called the Ferguson Effect, from Ferguson, Missouri, is when it all really began. And we started to see that this mistrust of police was being fed throughout the media. And as police leaders, we're constantly striving to find a way to bring people back into this noble profession that we know is noble and we know is necessary. And I oftentimes ask a question, how many people in the room are encouraging their children to become police officers, or their grandchildren to become police officers? And it is very rare that anybody raises their hand. And so, I told her this, and I will say this here in this room too, I need your help, because I believe that it's our public officials who can really help bring back the nobility to this, and you do a wonderful job because you do support our police. And I think that's why we're starting to see an increase in staff here. People are coming to Provo because they know we're supported all the way up the chain, and that's unique. They're not finding that in California and other places. But our recruitment team, they go out, they do a lot of social media posts, and I thought this was a good time to play our recruitment video for you. How do I do this? I don't see it. Something that we created two years ago, it's dear to me because one of the bike officers is Officer Schinners, who was murdered by gunfire a year ago. Hopefully they're here now. I'll hopefully just...
We work as citizens to improve quality of life, solve problems, safeguard liberties, and stop crime. We provide proactive police service in a professional and compassionate manner.
Thank you. All credit to Channel 17 and to our video team internally that put that together, and it's awesome.
Would you like us to share a link to that in our communications?
Sure, I'd love that. Yeah, and we, we put it up on our, our Facebook page and our, our homepages, but, and it's on our web page, but yes, that'd be great. Yes?
I noticed maybe like a bomb robot or something, isn't that? And it got me thinking, the dogs, the, the bomb sniffing dogs, sorry, I don't know the technical term.
Is EOD, so bomb?
It's bomb dogs. Okay. You know, for example, if we were to not have one of those, or two of those, we have to rely on a neighboring police force to bring that in if we have an issue, which might increase response time by 10 minutes, or 20 minutes, or something like that, or?
Exactly. There are other EOD dogs within the state of Utah, but the closest one may be the Salt Lake Airport.
Oh, really?
Especially where we're increasing our airport here, we need them here. And so, yeah, they're, 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 they're an awesome tool, very good tool to Again, I said in the very beginning that we have well-trained and great, and just well-equipped police officers here, I believe we have some of the nation's finest police officers here. And this article by MSN that came out recently stating that Provo is the second-best-run city, took a, they took the time to highlight the police department in there, and that was awesome, I thought. But they, they actually said that we provide opportunities for our police officers to become essentially the best professionals, and it's something that we know and we believe. We have 19 special teams that an officer can, can go into and become a special team member, from mountain rescue SWAT to the drone team. We're, we're always increasing and, and just doing more with what we can to, to keep our city safe. With all of that, our call volume continues to increase, and I'm gonna use the date, the year of 2012 as a reference for the rest of my time here. But in 2012, our call volume, these are calls for service, was at 61,000. Last year, 78,000. So it's increased by 22% since 2012. Our 911 calls have doubled since 2012. These are calls that we, we have to have somebody available to respond to. Nobody wants to call 911 and be told there's no officers available. We, we have to put down everything we were doing at the time, whether we're in your home talking to you about your runaway child, or whatever it may be, and we have to respond on that 911 call. And so, this number has doubled since 2012. Our top five crimes within the Provo Police Department that we've identified, in addition to traffic accidents, that we believe we can be proactive on, and that we can have a measurable effect in reducing, are vehicle theft, burglary, criminal mischief, graffiti and damaged property, vehicle burglary, and bicycle theft. I couldn't be more proud with the increase in calls for service and doubling 911 calls, that over the last three years, because of our commitment, if you remember the map in the beginning, to our neighborhoods, and to our expertise and where crimes are happening, and our crime analyst, who is daily pushing out hotspots of where crime is happening, along with historicals, that it, every year, in September, Joaquin gets very busy with theft. We get all the students back in town. We, we, we go to where the crime is occurring, and you can see the result, despite the rise in calls for service, we're bringing crime down. That's, that's, I mean, I attribute that to just great police work and great cops. We're using things to become more efficient, and one of the, one of the items in the general plan is that we use technology to help. One of the things we're doing, we, we started a, we purchased a project, or a plan called CopLogic, which is an online reporting system. So our citizens that don't need an officer there can report that their bicycle was stolen from their yard, and, and they can get a case number immediately. And that took 762 calls for service last year that we did not have to send a police officer to, so we are using technology to try to help bring that number down. Here's why 2012 is so important to this group. In 2012, the city hired PERF, which is the Police Executive Research Forum, to come to the city and to do a workload analysis of the police department. It was expensive to bring PERF into town, they're, they're internationally recognized as the experts in, in my industry. And in 2012, this was their statement that they made, that Provo police officers today are busy, they have little time to engage in community policing and problem-solving activities. And then they went on to say that we are busy 100% of our time, especially on weekends, that there is very little, if any, backup available to our officers. In 2012, when our calls for service were down by 22%, and our 911s were, were half of what they are today, they recommended that our city, our size, with our call volume, we needed 120 police officers to handle that call volume. Today, we have 115. And so, I am always trying to encourage and push that we bring our number up to at least what they said we should be in 2012, and that was 120 officers. And I recognize how expensive it is to do that. But our call volume continues to rise, and even though we're making a positive impact on crime, I don't believe this is sustainable, that, with, with the pending things that are coming. So we're gonna talk a little bit more about that, and I'm gonna turn some time over now to Captain Close.
Good afternoon. So the chief, he just asked me to go over a couple of numbers really fast here on Objective 5.4. For those of you who know the objective, it's just that we maintain a number of public safety officials that are equitable with the national standard of officers per thousand, and that we take into account population growth as we do these numbers. We know that we're the third-largest city in Utah. This chart, what I've done is I've taken Salt Lake out of the mix, Salt Lake is an anomaly, and Salt Lake's presence tends to make it look like we're trying to skew the data, so we wanted to make sure we compare ourselves to comparable cities, which is why Salt Lake's not in here. But we have the seven largest cities in Utah, on this chart, we're number two according to population. If we take that and flip it to the number of officers that each of those agencies employs, we go from second to, second to last down here. Meaning obviously that there's cities that are smaller than ours with less population that employ more officers to police that population. If we drill it down further, like the objective states, and we actually drill it down to officers per thousand residents, we actually move into a type for last on the list with I think it's important to note, the officers per thousand measure, it's an imperfect measure, it's problematic, there's issues with it. Where it does have value, though, is when you use it as a comparative measure, and the FBI does just that. It takes into account that large cities, which is why we took Salt Lake out, Salt Lake has 2.25 officers per thousand. They're really hard, large cities tend to be policed at much higher rates than small cities. But if you look at the national average for a city our size, they drill it down to a city the size of Provo, the national average would be 1.59. We're at 0.98. We should not be at 1.59. I believe Provo's a unique community, we do not need to be policed at a level that's 1.59, that would be inappropriate for us. However, if you try to make it look a little more accurate to what we should be at, if you take the graph we just showed and average that together, the Utah average of the seven largest cities comes up to 1.26, again excluding Salt Lake, which would raise that number significantly, so 1.26 being the Utah average. So for our goal, it says equitable with the national standards, we're not even gonna look at the national standard, but if we wanna look at the, just the Utah average, we could actually need to be employing 1.47, or 147 officers to be at the Utah average. Again, that, not a realistic goal to ask, we're not asking for that many. The chief mentioned PERF. What is not, like I said, the officers per thousand's an imperfect measure, what's not an imperfect measure is the way PERF does their workload analysis. They come and they look at calls for service, they look at population, they look at response times, they look at geographic density of the city. There's a lot of different factors they take into account to determine, this is how many officers this agency needs to effectively and safely police the community. And like chief said, they, they went at 120. So they ask us for five officers to take us from our current 115 to the 120 that PERF recommended back in 2012, which we don't believe is an extravagant request, because if you, again, look, it'd take us to 1.02 would be our officers per thousand, if we received the five that PERF recommended back in 2012. Which we would stay in the same position on this chart, we'd no longer be in a tie with Orem for last, but we would still be behind, our 1.02 would be behind Wes Jordan's 1.1. I think it just kinda goes to show we've done our best to be wise stewards of the funds it's given us, again, we don't think it's an extravagant request to go to 120. I hired on in 2000, and when I hired on in 2000, we had 100 sworn officers. And our full-time employees were at 175.23. It's important to note, this includes dispatch, since this time, dispatch has been taken out of our numbers. So for this number down here, I put dispatch back in, because again, I didn't wanna look like we're skewing the numbers, and I wanted to compare apples to apples. So if we put dispatch back in, we've got 115 sworn officers now, and we are very grateful for the extra 15 officers, it's made a significant difference in what we do. But, in 20 years, we've only had a net gain of five full-time employees, meaning what we've done over the years in order to gain a lot of these officers is we've also absorbed, we have, we've identified efficiencies, we've absorbed civilian positions in order to try and make, so we can have more officers on the road. The last part of the objective states that we need to take into account population growth. If you're aware of the research brief that the Gardner Policy did, it was in the direction of the governor's office and the state legislature. Wisely, they wanted to project up to what Utah's needs were gonna be, so they asked for a population study. Population study found that the majority of the population growth in Utah was going to occur in Utah County. In fact, between 2015 and 2025, Utah County was gonna see a 24% increase in population. If Provo sees a commensurate growth in population, if we grow 24% like the rest of the county, means in 2025, we're gonna be looking at a population of 143,500. That's just census number, it's not taking into account population swell, we experience a pretty decent population swell daily. We also have 30,000 BYU students that live in city limits, that's not in these numbers. We have several thousand UVU students. So again, this would be census only, not including population swell. We've been talking about increasing our ratio today, if we just wanted to maintain our 0.98, not increase, so we just wanna maintain our current 0.98 ratio, if our population grows as projected, we need to have 141 sworn officers by 2025, which would be an increase of 26 officers. Point being, every year, obviously, that we don't increase our numbers, it's behind, and we're trying to catch up and making it more difficult to just maintain what our current ratio is. I'm gonna turn our, turn the time over to Captain Wilken now. Thank you for your attention, and what I understand was a decided to be positive presentation.
Before I get started on my section, I just wanted to mention something, and I don't know if the mayor mentioned it already or not, but about a week ago, we were notified that Chief Ferguson is going to receive the Chief of the Year Award from the Fraternal Order of Police at the Black and Blue Gala later on this month. So it's a pretty big, pretty big...
I know where his office is, I'll get him back.
We're pretty proud of him. So we've identified the most important needs, the six most important needs at, for the police department this next year, and that's the, the officer positions, our officer car data, overtime budget, portable radios, equipment budget, and auxiliary vehicle storage building, and I'll go over each one of those separately here. We've already talked about the officers, the need for the five officers, our officer car data. Each one of our patrol officer, or patrol vehicles is equipped with a, a MO5 brownie with a high-speed internet capability, each of the officers also has a cellphone. We're typically, or we've been allotted our budget at $50,000 per year for that, but our actual bill comes out, it's $108,000. Each of our officers is, they happen to have a cellphone, obviously, to communicate with the public now, but each one of those cellphones is equipped with the camera that uploads pictures automatically to our evidence system. That way, the officer can't do anything with those pictures, they can't be shared with other people. Everything inside the car is now done electronically, everything from traffic accidents to citations is all electronic. In fact, the state won't let us, allow us to submit any handwritten reports anymore, it's all electronic, so it's important for us to have those in each one of the vehicles. Our overtime budget, each year, we're allotted approximately $200,000, but we spend much more than that. A lot of it is because of special events, because we've been low on officers recently. When we, when we hire a bunch of officers, like we recently did, we have to train those officers. So our field training officers end up spending an hour or two each day in overtime, unfortunately, watching the new officers and ensuring that they're doing what they're supposed to do. So far this year, we spent $241,000 in overtime. Fortunately, we should be able to back that up with, with personnel funds, hopefully. Portable radios. Couple of years ago, we received funding from the subscription, was it subscription, chief, for, for UCA?
UCA.
To replace most of the radios within the city. So we received our allotment, however, the radios that were purchased ended up going mostly to dispatch and a bunch of our patrol vehicles. We replaced about 40 of our, our portable radios. These radios will be compatible with the new UCA's radio system that should come on board within the next two to three years, but they'll need to be flashed to become compatible, and for cost of about $500, $500 to $800. And each one of these radios is about $2,500. These radios are 20 years old, we got them before the Olympics. Most of them do not look like this, I used some, some of the worst examples, but they're over 20 years old, or just about 20 years old, so they, they do need to be replaced. The cost of those is about $223,000, but we could also spread that out over about three years. Like I said, the funding that we received to purchase new radios, most of that went to dispatch, because we replaced all the mobile radios in, in the dispatch center, as well as for the recording devices that they have used. Equipment budget, we're allotted approximately $75,000 for equipment. Police equipment is expensive. I can tell you, just a shirt alone, because it says "police" in front of the word "shirt", is almost twice as much for some reason. And although we look everywhere we can and try to, try to reduce the costs for our equipment, it does become very expensive with all the equipment that the officers are required to wear. So you can see from previous, the past two years, $75,000, we've spent quite a bit more than that. And how do we do that? Fortunately, we had carryover money. Carrier money that we, we had asked for, for certain projects that we weren't able to do because the equipment was more important. The auxiliary storage facility, if you've been down to the city yards, you'll see that our, our emergency communication van, we call it the, the COM van, is parked in a big blue building out there. That whole area where we keep our spare vehicles, we've been asked to vacate by Public Works. In order to do that, they've given us some property just east of there that we plan to build an auxiliary building on, along with fire. The building that's there now is, it's 20 years old, and, or 25 years old, and it would be too costly to move, it would be cheaper to set it to something, something brand-new, so that's what we intend to do. This would keep our, our COM van, as well as some of our other specialty vehicles, indoor and out of the weather. If you've seen our mobile command post, or MEOP van, COM van, goes by different terms, I guess, we bought that in '93 or '94, and it still looks brand-new. And the reason that is, because we were able to keep it inside and out of the elements.
Back to you.
So, appreciate the captains both being here, they're experts in their field. To conclusion, the breakdown of what we are essentially asking in order to continue operations, to grow our operations, things that were underfunded or just unfunded in, breaks down as this. as this. Five officer positions bringing us to 120 officers. At 150,000, the reason it's 150,000 for that first year of police officers is because we also have a vehicle we have to purchase, and we have equipment we have to purchase for that officer. The second year, that price comes down. And important to note on this is that the schools have already come in to pay for half of one of those officers at $53,000. Our, our operations data that the captain just went over, our car data has been consistent year after year at $108,000. We're asking for an increase to right-size that at $58,000 so that it's just flushed. Our overtime budget, we're asking for an increase of $21,000 to bring us to $220,000. I believe that there's a very strong likelihood that we will continue to exceed that number just with the sheer number of events and the fact that we have to put officers on the street. Our equipment budget, again, an increase of $175,000 is a lot, but when you consider that, how much equipment costs, the cost of doing police work is expensive. And like the captain said, for some reason, our shirts seem to cost more than, they didn't say "police". And then our portable radios. $223,000 can be carried out over three years and, that's about the time crunch we have to become compliant with UCA. So we are kind of in a bind on that. We have to do this. That portable radio is just as vital a piece of equipment as our handguns, our handcuffs. So we have to have that equipment. But at $74,000 a year, we can begin purchasing those, those radios. And then the auxiliary storage is a one-time ask of $95,000, and I believe that cost will come down. And I know Public Works have been awesome to work with to help us with things, so. That is in a, that is a fast, I hopefully got it within time, close to. For those of you who are new to council, again, congratulations. And if you need more explanation, information, I'm always available, my staff is always available. We wanted to try to give you as much as we could about our police department and, and hope that you are as proud of the police department as I am. They're, they're an outstanding group. Is there any questions?
We're out of time, but if we can.
I was just going to ask, you know, I know nothing about law enforcement. How do we effectively look at this budget and say yay or nay on something? You know, I mean, I'd hate to be the guy who says no to something that I don't know a whole lot of doubt. How do we typically evaluate these types of budgets? At this level detail?
Yeah. What we're, what we're doing this year, which we started last year, is just having these kinds of presentations as preliminary discussions of different departmental needs in the city so that when we get the budget, the short-term turnaround that we normally have to approve the budget is, is not as challenging. So this is a way of sort of, we know preliminarily what they're going to be asking for in the budget, and when we get the draft of the budget, we can look at how, how it compares. John?
I want to add to you, we ask each of the departments to provide what we call sub-level requests, and it's kind of the detailed backup to what the chief just went over as far as what their requests were, talks about what the costs are, give you a description of what it is, what the benefits are, and what, how critical the need is. And then what we'll do is we will provide, fill out that list of sub-level requests to the council. And if we deliver the budget, we will come back with the administration with what our recommendation is that we fund part of the budget. And the council will have the opportunity to review that, see if they want to change anything or have any further questions. And so that kind of provides a form where you can evaluate, do what you feel like is most important.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you very much, chief. We recognize your wonderful service and those of, all of your officers and staff. We're very, very grateful to live in such a community and have your, have your help and service that makes our community so great. And I, and I don't think, I'm glad to know that you feel that, and your, and your staff and officers feel that this is a good place to work because we love having you. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number two, presentation regarding capital improvement projects for fiscal year 2020, 2021 by David Mortensen. Budget Officer Controller, thank you for being here, David.
Yes, thank you for some of your time here.
Just note that we're just slightly behind. If you can shave off a few minutes, that's appreciated.
My best.
We have 30 minutes for this.
Okay. So the first thing I wanted to do, for those that aren't familiar with what our capital improvement plan is, every year, we update this plan and release a new version. Basically, it gives an overview of all of the capital projects or large capital purchases that the city is planning over the next five years. So a capital purchase is defined as something that's over $5,000 that can be depreciated over time. So things like computer equipment, smaller items like that, we don't include, but larger items like vehicle purchases, large equipment purchases, and then of course, the large projects that we have going on within the city are some of the things that we're going to talk about today. There are a lot of things going on in the city, a lot of capital projects, as you know. So this is kind of going to be a summary overview of some of the numbers and some of the projects, and focusing more on some of the new projects that we have on the plan this year that we haven't seen in prior years. I did want to briefly just explain kind of the, the format of these summaries that you'll see. We ask the departments to put these in different categories, either funded, partially funded, or unfunded. So when you see something that's in a funded category, that means we've identified the funding source for that. It's anticipated, it will be included in this next year's budget. If there's something partially funded, it means that we, we've identified some of that funding, but not necessarily all of it. And if we don't identify that missing part before the budget's prepared, it won't be included. And then unfunded is exactly that. We, it's something that's a priority, something that we need to do, but we haven't identified the funding for it yet. And then there's also different priority codes that you'll see. There's priority code one is critical health and safety. These are projects that are highest in priority and represent things that would create significant issues if they're not completed. Number two is considered necessary infrastructure, something that doesn't rise to the level of critical for health and safety, but it's something that staff feels is necessary to put in place. And then number three is aspirational projects, those things that are more wants and desires and not necessarily something that has to be done right away. And then there's also a code that you'll see indicating what kind of an effect these projects will have on the operating budgets of the city. So there's the options of A, potential increase, B, little to no impact, C, potential increase, sorry, A was potential decrease, B, little to no impact, C, potential increase, or D, current increase needed. So that's just a quick overview as you look at these sheets, kind of what to be looking for. Before I get into specific departments, I did want to just give an overall total for your information.
Sports.
Yeah.
I mean, one other symbol there is the little asterisk.
Yes.
So that.
Yes, the asterisk is a project that's either new or significantly different than what has been in prior plans. So when you see that asterisk over there under project description, that's what that should indicate, so.
And I may, and when I joined the council, I didn't know the history of things and I just kind of things as they were, but let me just commend your division. They have been very responsive to our requests about this document so that we can understand it more readily and quickly, so that a lot of, a lot of those coding and things like that, you know, I think my first year came in and looked at this thing and it was 150 pages of what am I looking at? And is this new? And I mean, there was, there was a whole, like, what are the ramifications and all that? And they worked really hard to come up with a format that, and it probably helps to have a little bit of experience as well, but, you know, to be able to kind of flip through and kind of, the most important stuff kind of bubbles to the top and is much more digestible, I think, and I think that's a great point, great.
Thank you, I appreciate that. One thing to also note, I did send out, the first version of this plan was sent out about a week ago. That did contain just some minor calculation errors that we fixed. So I sent out a new version to Chair Hanley yesterday morning. So that should be the version, if you are reviewing it, make sure you're looking at that most recent updated version that was sent out yesterday, so. And I'll point out where those differences are as I go along, so. So as an overall total, before we get into specific departments, I just wanted to let you know, over the next five years, the total amount of capital projects being planned add up to $435,361,860. That's the total of the funded projects that we've already identified where that funding's coming from, that will be, we anticipate will be included in budget requests over the next five years. On top of that, there's an additional 3.7 million in projects that are either partially funded or unfunded at this time, that we'll still be looking for funding sources. Of course, that's that five-year plan as of now, that's always subject to change as time goes on and new things pop up, but that's just for your information, kind of the scope of all the projects we're looking at. Okay, so moving on, first of all, to airport, we're going to do this alphabetically, so it may jump from department to department occasionally. It's alphabetical in the plan, so I wanted to stick with that. Yeah, John?
I just also mentioned too that we have Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and Energy here, if you have a specific question for the directors as well.
So in the airport, you can see here, the total five-year plan includes requests for projects of just under 50 million. The ones with asterisks, you will note, are the terminal landside improvements, as well as the terminal building itself. Those are the two items included in the next year's fiscal year budget that we'll be working on soon. The other projects are future years. Another new one here is a snow removal building to be included in the 2022-23 fiscal year budget. Any questions or comments on airport projects? Okay. Airport did submit a couple of unfunded projects on page five. Those include crack seal and restripe on a runway, runway 1331, and taxiway alpha. So that's just something to be aware of, that we're looking for funding sources for those projects. Okay, on page 14, we'll jump to page 14 for energy requests. No asterisks on this one. Energy, this is pretty consistent with what they've been doing year after year to maintain our system. As you can see, it's mainly distribution improvements, transmission improvements, city projects like streetlights, other designated city projects, some SCADA software, and then other administrative items. So it's pretty standard and typical for what we've seen from energy in the past. Yeah.
Can I ask a question as we go along? Should I wait till you?
You can, yeah, as we go along is great.
So just before energy, back in airport.
Yep.
I think it was page 11 on our copy.
Okay.
It was partially funded, I believe, is the sheet, but there was a $21 million gap. And so, you know, obviously, we haven't identified what the source is, but do we have a, a guess on where that $21 million is going to be coming from?
Do you have a question for Dave and Jimmy?
You go to the sheet, possibly.
John, could you go to page 11 on these? Or maybe it wasn't?
Unfunded? The partial funded. That's on the. Is there, okay, try, try about page six or something.
I'm wondering if it's a different department here, thinking it was the airport?
Yeah, I don't know, it was the airport, and, and I guess I probably was reviewing the old one.
Okay. I don't think anything should have changed on this.
Go ahead, and I'll, I'll see.
Okay. Yeah, if you find it, let us know and we can address it. Dave, did you have a comment?
I don't, I don't know if it was specifically on the terminal, but, but we are still seeking some, some additional funding. I don't know if that's the, if that's the specific logic or project that you were looking at.
Yeah, we, we have in the tune of 20-something million that we are seeking right now, things are looking really good, they just haven't been finalized, so. We feel like the plan is in place, it's just a matter of waiting for those processes to occur.
So we think most of that will be federal funding?
A very large portion is, is federal, FAA, again, really rough numbers, again, this changes every day with what FAs do. The FAs, the tune of 23 billion in the projects, state gave us nine, county gave us four and a half, where we have applied to MAC for 15. So, yeah, a lot of different funding sources in that terminal project. A lot of those have been solidified, some are still in process.
Yeah, and Councilmember Harding, if you come across what you were looking at, let us know, we'll address it, so. So going back to page 14 here, with energy, a total for the five-year plan of 36 point, just about 36.8 million dollars in projects, with the most, the next fiscal year, 2021, being just over 13 million. Are there any questions? We do have Travis here, if there's any questions on the energy projects that are proposed.
Question. About the, so I've heard that there was some money because of some recs that might be coming in? Is that premature to talk about that, or is that, is that going to help fund some of this, or is that for other things?
What that funds is, it's actually a UMPA expense, and so when we discussed, remember the 80-megawatt plant out that we bought by Mona? They did sell some of those recs in the first five years. That money is going to stay at UMPA, but we're going to use that money to fund our battery replacement program. So it's not part of any of our CIP, but we are using those funds to, for the Clean Air Initiative that we are starting in April.
Thanks.
With that, we can jump to page 35. Page 35 will talk about engineering-funded projects. So the total funded projects for engineering, $16,785,870. These are pretty much unchanged from last year's CIP. Of course, the big items on the CIP are the Lakeview Parkway in various phases, so there's multiple lines there that make up Lakeview Parkway, split in phases, so. Any questions or comments on engineering? Okay, page 44 is the summary for our general CIP. The two items on this also not changed from last year, and that would be the Public Safety and City Administration Building and Replacing Fire Station Number 22. So the City Center Building, Public Safety Building, we have planned out for the next two fiscal years, as you can see there, for a total of just under 59 million remaining, so add on to that what we've already spent for the total project cost, but. And then Fire Station Number 22, we're planning to wrap up in this next fiscal year with that 705,000, and then that project will be completed. Any questions on general CIP projects? Okay, move along, page 47. This is our Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Fund summary. Total five-year plan of just over $15 million in projects. None of these are necessarily new, but I did want to highlight, in last year's CIP, Provo River Parkway Trail was just one item, but it's been split into various phases now as well. So fourth from the top, fifth from the top, and then fourth from the bottom, those are the three aspects of the Provo River Parkway Trail now. Any questions on Parks Recreation? We have Scott and Doug here that can answer questions. Parks and Recreation on page 48, just the next page, they do have some partially funded projects, which include the Regional Sports Park that we've already heard a lot about, Rock Canyon Trailhead Enhancement, and then a Downtown Closet Park. Any questions for staff on those three?
Is the Downtown Closet Park that spawned on University in Turin South?
Yep. Yep, just south of the City View Apartments, I believe, right? Any other questions? Okay, moving on to page 64. Right there. This is our ERP or our Provo 360 capital project. So last year, the only thing on this was just our Provo 360 project that we're in phase two of now, getting ready to go live, I believe in early May. So that should be wrapped up and paid for in the next fiscal year. New to this list this year is this HCM, which is our Human Capital Management for human resources to use. I believe we have a presentation, is it today's meeting? There's a presentation. There's a presentation on more details.
So, after the presentation, we'll be talking about it.
Yep. So, probably don't wanna go into it too much of that, because there'll be more detail just shortly, but about $2 million for that. Any questions there? Okay. Page 67, this is our B&amp;C Roads Capital Projects. Once again, there's nothing new on this list compared to last year, other than adding street overlays for 2025, but 2020 dropped off, so it's really the same, but with a new year. Total ask of 12,850,000 for these projects. This is funded through B&amp;C Road Funds that we received from the state. Those funds can be used for capital improvements like these or for maintenance projects, and we definitely use all of it, so. Any questions on these projects? You'll see number 13 here, Lakeview Parkway and Trail, so this is just additional funding to go toward that project, showing up in a different spot. Any other questions there? On the next page, 68, there was one unfunded project proposed, and that is, it's been on this list, I think, for a while, it was on the list last year as well, but this is the Draper Lane project from 500 South to 600 South, for 2.5 million. So, currently unfunded, but on the radar of our roads. The next group is on page 84, this is our sanitation department. But, the big project here, I mean, it's not huge, but Public Works Facilities Improvements, this is, a portion is taken from each various division within the Department of Public Works to help pay for facilities improvements every year. So, you'll see this line item in some of the other areas as well. And then added this year is just a, an every year $30,000 for vehicle replacement, just to make sure that sanitation vehicles are staying up to date. There's no questions on sanitation, we can go to page 87. Getting closer. This is our stormwater. There's a few new projects here, so the total for stormwater for five years is 13.1 million. The new projects, down at the bottom from 12 through 16, there's Franklin Park Outfall for 1.4 million, Railroad Ditch Piping for 40,000, Windsor Drive Storm Drain for 45,000, Airport Moat Environmental Study for 300,000, and Spot Improvements for 50,000, and all of those are anticipated to be budgeted in this upcoming budget. Are there any questions on stormwater? Not seeing any, we can jump to page 104. Page 104 is our Utility Transportation. These are projects that we use the UTF fees to pay for, and this is exactly the same as last year. It's $2.1 million per year for overlay expenses, and $200,000 for crack seals, so over five years, the total would be 11.5 million. Any questions or comments on utility transportation?
That's based on the assumption that the amount is the same every year?
Correct. Yeah, it could fluctuate, but this is just based on the assumption that it'll be the same, so. So, the next group we'll jump to is Vehicle Replacement, page 107. Oh, sorry. Yep, there we go. So, this is indicating the new vehicles that we'd be purchasing over the next five years for vehicle replacement. The city has a fleet committee that meets regularly to assess the needs of the fleet. We have representatives from each different department to go through all their fleet and to prioritize, so this is the result of meetings and analysis from the committee over the last few months to come up with what our priorities will be for the next five years. And you can see, total for the next five years, just under 13 million dollars in new vehicles, so, and these would be replacing, this is an additional fleet, this is replacing fleet as it needs to be replaced. Can jump to page 108, just the next one, this is wastewater. This is the page that had the calculation errors, so if you're looking at this plan and you're looking at the wrong one, you'll see some much bigger numbers, so if you're seeing bigger numbers, it's, it's the wrong one. There was just a cell that got copied where it shouldn't have been, but anyway, the total projects in wastewater over the next five years is 162 million. The majority of that, as you can guess, is the new wastewater treatment plant, that would be item one, a total of 112 million for that project. Two new items that are on this list are consultant costs for wastewater projects of 2.8 million, and exchange park sewer replacement, 750,000. Are there any questions or comments on wastewater projects? Last but not least is the water fund, so page 123. So, the water fund, total projects over the next five years are just under 42 million dollars. The two new things on this list from last year, it's mainly the same with the addition of some vehicle replacement in 2022-23, and then I also put an asterisk next to the aquifer storage and recovery projects. It was on the list last year, but the funding was quite a bit lower, so I wanted to note, I think it was 250,000 a year in the last plan, and now it's up to 1.25 million per year, so I just wanted to make a note of that. With that, are there any questions about water projects? Yes?
So, apparently, the link in the, that we're given is to last year's.
Oh.
So, it wasn't just last week that I was looking at, but last year's.
Okay.
So, many of my questions may not matter at all, but I assume we're still putting away money for the parallel line out of the canyon?
Dave's nodding over to.
That's shown, that's shown here that we're definitely adding in, I just was curious if we, rough ballpark, where are we at? So, thank you.
I think that one, we're between 3 and 12 million currently.
And it's gonna, it's like a 16-million-dollar project or something?
The total project is 16. We don't have to build all of it at the same time, and our intent is to only build part of it, you know, in phases, so we're getting close to the point where we've built one phase.
Thank you. That's everything I have. Hopefully, we somewhat got back on schedule, but if you do have any further questions as you review this plan, we'll make sure that you have the correct plan and link, and then if you have questions as you review it, feel free to contact Finance or any of the department directors in the various departments, and we can get your questions answered, so.
Thank you very much.
Dave, appreciate your time. Move on to item number three, which is a presentation regarding the Administrative Services for this year's 2021 budget. We have 45 minutes, please.
Thank you, we appreciate the opportunity. We were originally scheduled to make the presentation for Administrative Services in April, but we switched with the Fire Department, because in the area of human resources, we had some things at the time sensation we wanted to be able to share with you, and so what we've done is we broke it up, we're gonna talk about Finance and Human Resources today, and then in April, we'll be talking, on the 14th, we'll be talking about Recorder, IAS, Justice Court facilities, and then giving you an overview of the debt for the city. So, I'm gonna start off with Finance. Finance should be relatively quick, and then Daniel will kinda lead, and I'll share some of the discussion as well, and we'll talk about it, about human resources. So, the first item I wanna talk a little about that we were asked to look at is, if we were asked to make some, some cuts or recommendations for reductions, what would we do? And if we flip a couple of slides.
Right there, John.
There we go. There we go, right here. Okay. The first thing that, that, as we talked about as a department, is that we would wanna evaluate each of the services that we currently provide, and we would not recommend just doing across-the-board cuts, that, that's a difficult thing, and you're really eliminating some of the, some of the most important services, and potentially, you could look at services that aren't as essential. We'd also look at how they support the general plan, and then look at more efficient ways to do things, particularly with technology and the potential consolidation and duplication of efforts. It's also important to look at the benefits versus the various costs of the services that are being provided. Be important to seek input from others. We, some of the services that we provide are internal services to other departments, I feel like it'd be important to get feedback from the other departments, and then other services that we provide are to the customers or to the residents, we'd wanna get their input. And then, last of all, we would wanna be careful and look at the determining impact of eliminating the service, and to see what the consequences would be. The next thing we wanna talk a little about is supplemental requests. We had some supplemental requests in other areas, but in Administrative Services, we had a supplemental request for Information Security Analyst. And during this past year, we hired a young man by the name of Damon Heffner, and wanted to give you a little bit of report on his responsibilities. I would also mention that we made the decision to have him report directly to Administrative Services, because part of what he does is checks up on IAS to make sure that the, the controls are in place and things are adequately taken care of to eliminate and reduce the possibility for any cyber threats. And so, as a little approach, one of the things that Damon and I have been doing, and we pretty much met with all the directors discussing security issues pertaining to their department, and had some good discussions. I would mention, subsequent to those discussions, Damon has actually done some follow-up with Public Works and some of the other departments to look at specific areas. Currently, we're working on establishing some cybersecurity policies that will help strengthen our controls and reduce the likelihood for threats. Would mention that just today, in our director meeting, we talked about and reviewed three policies that we're, we're currently looking at, considering. Also, working on and been working with you, the five-year capital, the five-year annual CIP budget, we just had that discussion with you, it's delivered early in April. I would mention that it is already out on the city website, on a link under the Finance Department, so for residents or anyone that would wanna go and look at that, it's there. As part of the budget, we have a 10-year projection each year, and that helps encourage us and encourage having discussions about having the budget be sustainable, which is one of the council objectives, and to make sure that we're looking long-term and not just short-term. We strive to have and be open and transparent. As I mentioned on the webpage, we have links to our, our comprehensive annual financial report, our popular annual financial report, by the way, for those that may not know, the popular annual financial report is a summarized version, it's easier to read and understand for residents and others, and so we have that, as well as our comprehensive report, which is more, includes all the details, and is, is specifically helpful for bond rating agencies and others that wanna look deeper into the city's finances, and then, of course, our budget document. We're always open and receptive to questions from residents concerning finance and the budget, and we also complete and are part of what's called a continuing disclosure for our outstanding debt, and we do that each year, and that's provided to bondholders and other interesting, interested parties on the city's overall financial condition. One thing I didn't have is a slide here that I'd also mention is our quarterly report, and we just completed the quarterly report for the second quarter of this fiscal year, and planning coming back to the council in an upcoming budgets, in an upcoming work session to discuss that and give you kinda that feedback about the finances for the city. As far as, are there goals, objectives in the general plan where you feel like you could, you could use more budget, and if so, what are they? We really feel like, right now, in the Finance Division, that we have adequate budget, and not recommend any additional funds, and if there's areas that are underfunded, currently, no, we feel in the Finance Division that we're able to meet those needs, and so. That, any questions on the Finance Division? Okay. We will turn the time over to Daniel Softly, our Human Resources Division Director.
Forward, back, that's pretty straightforward, right? Okay. Thank you for having me. I'm Daniel Softly, this is my first chance to be in front of the new council, so I'm glad to see some familiar faces and then quite a few new faces. I've been with the city for just under 20 years, the HR Director for the last board, so I appreciate the opportunity to come every year and kinda give you an update on where our focus is, particularly when it comes to the general plan, but then also to put in front of you a couple of budget items that are gonna be coming forward in our area. As far as the city's general plan goals in HR, we are a support service, internal service to the city. A lot of the goals that are in the general plan are not specific to human resources, but in many ways, we affect everybody else's ability to do that. Our objective in HR, our primary objective is to assist in the development of a highly-trained, competent, dedicated, and fairly compensated group of public employees. I would also add to that, that one of our responsibilities is to make sure that we have a, a safe work environment, one that is professional, and we set policies and help oversee that process so that happens. The areas of focus in HR, put payroll first, because that's the one that most people care about, is that they get paid every two weeks, but we also go into the areas of recruitment, this involves outreach, trying to find people to come work for the city, pre-employment testing, make sure that we have selection processes that are fair and legal. The employee benefits, this involves medical, dental, retirement leave accruals, we look at those annually. Compensation, we do an annual market study comparing against other agencies that are similar to us, see what they're paying their employees, and we maintain competition with them. Wellness programs, performance appraisals, training, accident reporting, when people get hurt, how that work through the workers' compensation system, policy development and employee relations, we make sure that due processes fall in conjunction with the legal office, investigations, discipline oversight, make sure that we are being fair and equitable across. So, we touch a lot of areas, I work very closely with all the department heads on, on all of these issues. As far as goals and objectives, if we were given more budget, one of the areas that I am trying to improve in the city is to enhance our supervisor training. John mentioned that we have an Employees Essentials Program, that's something that we put in place, I don't know how many years ago it is now, five or six, where employees come in and they have to watch these videos, that's on dealing with substance abuse in the workplace, preventing violence, ethics, communications training. We would love to increase that for our supervisors. We have made efforts in this area, this last year, we developed a live harassment training program that all employees in the city had to go. My long-term goal is to have a whole bunch of subjects that supervisors can be trained on and incentivize non-supervisors to take it. Most of our training right now is kind of, as they get to position, then we teach them on all of these things. I would love to have a program that would prepare these individuals to have the job the day that they have it. So, a lot of that would be ability to track our training, and that will lead into another discussion I have later on about a new HR system, develop our courses, et cetera. As far as important needs being unfunded or underfunded at this point, I don't believe that's the case. We didn't have any supplemental money last year, so nothing to report on there. But the budget items for the new fiscal year that I'd like the council to consider, number one is just to continue to support efforts for fair compensation. As I mentioned earlier, we do a annual compensation study, it's ongoing at this point, we're a little bit earlier in the process than when we normally report to the council, but that will involve us looking out and then making our recommendations and then coming forward, and that's part of the, the budget that we put forward. We don't have numbers for you right now, but that's ongoing. The, the next two items, though, are a little bit more relevant, are a little more pertinent at the moment. There are Tier Two Public Safety and Firefighter Retirement enhancements that are going into place July 1st of this year, as a result of legislation that occurred last year, and also legislation that occurred this year. I'm gonna go into that in more detail. And then lastly, I wanna talk about the implementation of a new HR system. We've spent left, efforts over the last year going through a selection process and coming up with a recommended system. So, let's go with Tier Two Public Safety and Firefighter Enhancement. Just as a very brief history lesson, prior to 2010, the retirement system for public safety- safety and firefighters was pretty straightforward. There was only one program. Essentially, the plan was a 20-year retirement. You could retire at any age with 20 years. You earned 2.5% as a multiplier for every year of service for the first 20 years. Anytime after 20 years would go to a 2% multiplier. This is a pretty straightforward pension fund. In 2010, the state made significant changes, and they created a two-tiered retirement plan, not only for public safety and firefighter, but for regular employees as well. In the public safety, they created two options, one that they call a hybrid, which is essentially, it's primarily a defined benefit plan. You dropped to a 1.5% per year multiplier. They capped the employer contribution at 12%. Any excess between the planned cost and the contribution gap would go to a 401K for the employee. That's why they call it the hybrid approach. Based on the cost of this plan right now, that 401K is only, I think it's 0.7% at the moment. And they changed it from a 20-year plan to a 25-year plan. The second option that they gave new employees coming in after July of 2010 was a straight defined contribution. It's we will give you that 12%, and we'll put it in a 401K, and this gives employees the ability to choose between the two of them. They have to make that decision when they hire on. Last year, the legislation passed plan enhancements that go into effect this year. Essentially, the plan enhancements for the hybrid are they are adding, are they are going to change the multiplier from 1.5% to 2% on service after July 1st of this year. Any service prior to July 1st of this year will still be counted at the 1.5%, but this will increase it to 2%. And they're also increasing the employer contribution cap by 2% to 14. The 401K is going up by that similar 2% contribution to 14%. So what is the cost of these plan enhancements? Well, with the increase to the cap of 2% plus the enhancement of the multiplier from 1.5 to 2, the total cost of the hybrid option is actually increasing by 4.27%. Now, employers are mandated by Senate Bill 56 to pick up the 2% increase to the contribution cap. So that is an expense that we're going to have this year that we didn't have last year. The remaining 2.27% is an employee portion, but the state has given employers the option to pick up their employees' contribution. It does require a formal action, though. On the 401K option, the total cost of the plan is increasing by 2% from the 12% contribution to the 14%. However, cities have to know if an employer picks up the 2.27% for the hybrid plan, they have to match that contribution for the defined contribution plan. So what that means for Provo City is the annual cost of the required 2% increase to the contribution cap is $72,000 based on how many Tier Two public safety and firefighters we have. The annual cost to pick up the 2.27% employee portion is $82,000. So the decision by the city is really an $82,000 decision, although the total budget impact if they do that is $154,000 for this next year. So what should the city do? My recommendation is to pick up the employees' portion, and there's really two reasons why we do, why that is my recommendation. Number one, and we've searched around some of the surrounding cities, no one's really come out and completely, you know, announced that they're going to do that. The state hasn't announced that either. However, from behind the scenes, when we've talked to some of our key competitors, they are planning on, they've indicated that they will be picking up the 2.27% for these groups. A couple of the individuals that have indicated, individuals, agencies are key competitors for us, that we would struggle head-to-head with them if we did not pick it up and they did. Also, though, the other thing that I think is relevant is for our Tier One firefighters, they have a similar plan where they have an employee portion and an employer portion. And we currently pick up the employee portion for the Tier One firefighters. Internal equity-wise, that makes sense for me to continue to do that for the Tier Two public safety and firefighters as well. And as I mentioned really briefly, a decision to pick up the employees' portion requires a formal action. I gave Elizabeth a copy of, I think that's gone around. This is a document provided by the URS to just kind of summarize these plan changes. It says a formal action, but it doesn't necessarily say what that is. It could be the minutes of a meeting, I think, is an example, or part of the budget if it's mentioned in there. But some sort of decision has to be made and then approved to go into effect, and that has to be done before July 1st, 2020. All right. Any questions on that? John?
I would just add one thing, and that is that it would be helpful to kind of get an indication from the council on their support, which correction. I realize the city has to finalize, but this is just another example. You know, the chief chair, some supplemental requests that he had, this one wasn't on the list, but this is the same way we would kind of need to know. We don't have to know today, but we need to know relatively soon if we're applying.
Cliff?
So can you go back to the slide where you showed the 2+, possibly the 2 plus 2? Okay, so you got, where does the extra 2%, where's the 0.27 come from? Is that just the effect of the multiplying costs?
Yes. That's my best guess of that because you are multiplying your original, you're going up, and then you're actually multiplying or enhancing the multiplier. So the 25 years still stays the same, they're not going back to a 20-year retirement, so that's a significant change.
So go back one slide.
Okay.
So as I understand it, then, effectively, in either case, we're still only contributing 14%. Well, we should mean 14%, but the cost, the total cost. Year-over-year is, this year is 4.27.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The plan itself is going up 4.27%, but the cap is only going up 2%. Employees, some agencies are going to have the employees pick it up, which would mean a reduction in their out-of-pocket costs. So the city has the option, cities have the options, or anyone who participates in here has the option of picking that up. And those are based on the cost of the projections of the plan going up. Incidentally, the other plans in the city, the Tier One plans and the Tier Two plans for regular employees, those are all staying static, so they're staying the same. So this is the only one impacted directly because of these enhancements. How many employees does this, I mean, I guess we could back them up a little bit, but $80,000 difference, how many employees are we talking about? Let me see. I ran that query. Probably about 60, 50, somewhere around there. So I think it was like 63. And our understanding at this point is this is a one-time thing, catch-up type situation because of the plan change? Normally, these increases are not this drastic, but when you change the plan to enhance the benefit, then it's a lot more drastic.
So it is ongoing, but it's not expected to be this large again.
Yes, that's a good clarification. And a lot of this is coming, when they made the plan, when they made the plan changes in 2010, since that time, there have been significant efforts to try and get people into public safety positions. There's been shortages of applications, and all of these efforts are now to try, there are some that think they cut too deep in 2010. These are an effort to sort of bring that benefit back up. I believe that this is a factor in all of that, although I believe there are other factors as well. Any questions? John?
The only thing I would add is, you're welcome to talk to both chiefs, but I am certain that they would both be in very strong support of this.
Yeah.
Particularly, we would be pleased with the need to be able to recruit and retain officers.
And John, if you want to sentence, I'd be supportive of something like this as a council person.
I would too.
So I think one thing we've asked the council not to do in the past, starting last year, was to not make motions on it, but I think the way you can solve this, it talks about it here, the formal action could simply be the minutes of a meeting resolution ordinance or statute. I think by including it as one of the supplemental costs in the new budget, I think that would satisfy that formal requirement.
My thoughts on that, I'm generally supportive. I think, generally supportive, but without seeing the rest of it, it's going to be hard to kind of get a final decision. And so to me, it depends a little bit on what else, perhaps the police and fire, you know, when we see what the final request is.
Correct.
I think that may even, generally, I think this is something I think should stress.
Yep. Okay. All right. What time do I have till?
Are you the last speaker in this?
I am, for administrative services, yes.
Yeah, until 2:10, or, yes, 2:10.
Whoever's running this, can you bring up the next EHC M1? So I'd like to change direction a little bit and talk about the vendor selection process that the city has been undergoing for the last almost 12 months to select a new human capital management system. It's a big, long fancy term for basically a new HR computer system. So I want to give you a little bit of this, did I do that?
Yeah.
Okay. What I want you to do is, make you a little bit familiar with kind of our current system matrix. Back in 1996, the city purchased a product called PeopleSoft, the one in the middle. Whoop.
Hang on one second.
Okay.
I have a PDF, or PowerPoint.
Is this me now? Okay. In 1996, the city purchased PeopleSoft as its HR system, and it has served us well for those last 20, almost 24 years. When we bought it, it was not owned by Oracle. That is something that came later, and as Oracle took over, they started developing their own kind of cloud solution, and they have moved away from our PeopleSoft product, which is kind of one of the reasons why we've had to start going out and looking. But as we've, over the years, as we've tried to use, leverage PeopleSoft for all of our HR needs, we've ended up having to go out and have a myriad or a matrix of other systems to do the things that we do most effectively or most efficiently. These are all the ones that we use. If you look in the top left, Provo City, this is an online job application. This is a homegrown system. This is where people come in, and in order to apply online, they'll enter in all of their data. At that point, they, we send a link out to our supervisors. This is, as I said, a very homegrown system. The individual who made this is long since retired, and it makes keeping this up very challenging. It went down for a couple of days, a couple of weeks ago. So there's lots of issues with that particular system. One of the problems with all of these systems is that they're all disconnected from each other. A lot of them have integrations, but some of those issues are manual as well. So if you take a look at someone who applies for the city, they go into our online application that's homegrown, they enter in all of their data, we send that out to supervisors who can't schedule anything, they can't schedule interviews, say yes or no to any of the applications, that's all done manual. They have their interviews, then they come in, and we make a decision on them. We go into our SIRE system, which is our workflow. This is the one that says, this is the one I want to hire, and the department head checks off on all of it, and it goes through these approval processes. Once those are all approved, we bring the employee back in, the new hire, and say, please fill out your new hire paperwork, which they then type all the way in, and it's not integrated with our PeopleSoft system, so our front desk person then has to take that paperwork. And, you know, we felt pretty good because we got it to be able to type in, but we still have to manually enter it into PeopleSoft. Once they're into PeopleSoft, we then have to load that same information into our time and attendance system. We interact with our Talent Quest system, and so throughout the whole city, these interactions where there's a redundancy of data are happening all the time. And so what we're trying to do is we're piggybacking on the philosophy in the Provo 360 project, which is to take as many of these systems as we can and get them under one roof so that they're integrated, and we reduce the redundancy of data, and we make it a much more modern experience for people coming into the city and for supervisors to do the HR jobs that they need to do, which is significant, the hiring, the raises, all of that information is in our system. So back in May of 2019, we started a selection process. The very first step was the prep. We gathered all of our functional data, we looked at all of our systems, we looked at all of our requirements, what we need the system to be able to do, and from that, we developed our RFP. We sent that out in June. We got all of our responses back. We held discovery sessions, so the people that were bidding on our project could come in and ask us questions. We established criteria that we were going to evaluate it on, and then when they came in, we did that evaluation and shortlisted. We had 10, if I, I mean, if 10 people came and did bids for the city, some of them we eliminated right away because they were significantly more costly, so they were dropped off. A couple of them did not meet the functionality that we needed, and they were dropped off. We ended up with our finalists, and I'll get to those in a minute. We ended up with four vendors pitching three solutions. We had two vendors come in with the same solution. Part of our finalist selection, we had onsite demonstrations. We brought every one of these individuals in for a week. They demonstrated to our core team that included HR, IS, some select people who were involved with those functionalities throughout the city. We did a review of their technology, did reference checks, did a larger cost analysis to say, well, this is how much their charging is for the system, but how much else do we need for support and all this kind of, to get a true site. That came to our final evaluation, and we have a recommendation. I'm going to share that with you in a few minutes. But now we're in the part, stage four, which is our confirmation. Did a budgetary impact. We've since gone to the administrative, the administration for approval and of our recommendation. The executive is our executive steering committee that's on the 360 project. This has been presented to them as well. And now we're here at council. We're hoping to be able to move forward on this so that we can start implementing by no later than May. The reason why is we have contracts in our current system that expire next July. We don't want to renew those. We want to be off of those by that time so that we can save costs that are not going to, that we feel are not needed to go forward.
By May 2021.
Yes. Not May of 2020. Let me clarify that, that we're not that good. May 2021 is what we're trying to get done for next year. So I want to review with you kind of the finalists. So we, as I said, we had four vendors come in pitching three products. Sierra Cedar and Cyber are implementation companies. They basically, they are contracted with Oracle to put their Oracle Cloud solution. The Oracle Cloud solution is kind of the evolution, the cloud solution evolution of our Oracle PeopleSoft product. They both came in with a bid to implement that. Another company that came in is Tyler Technologies. They were selected as a finalist. They have a product called Munis. And then lastly, Workday. So we went through all of their approaches. This is where they came in and they did the demonstrations for us. Josh Irig and his team did the technology reviews, and then we looked at their operational and support costs, how much it actually owns, how much it's going to cost the city to actually own the system. One of the things, when we were doing our evaluation, we had several intangible factors that we looked at. The primary one for me is the number of systems needed to deliver our HR services. Again, this is very similar to the goals of the Provo 360 project, which are to get all of these under one roof if possible. Obviously, this heavily impacts our integrations, our maintenance ability, and our user experience. Right now, on that matrix, I can't remember how many passwords and user IDs you need to get into all of those. I think there's at least four different ones. That is not a good way to do business nowadays. We should be able to have kind of one flow-through. We also looked at the effect of the productivity and efficiency. We're trying to eliminate as many manual processes as possible. The level of service provided to our users, those are people who are applying for our jobs. This is their first look at Provo City. I think it's important that they understand that we're not, that we are a modern city and have a good system to use. Self-service for internally, and then for the departments, giving them access to the data that they need. Another significant issue for me is the length of time the system is going to remain viable at the level Provo requires. Oracle PeopleSoft has shown its age. Things have moved on, but we also can't ignore the fact that it was a valid system for us for two decades. That has saved the city money over that period of time by not having to go through this process every five years. And then obviously, the system that best supports and forward- And then obviously, the system that best supports and forwards the city's vision. So we had a scoring process. This was helped put together through our consultant, A A C's Navigate One methodology. That was cleared through the management, and we went and evaluated all of these systems on these categories: solution costs, cultural fit, demos, implementation, technology, and reference checks. When you went through the whole process, and these were all given various weights, after everything was done, the number one ranked system was Workday, followed by Cyber and Sierra pushing the Oracle product. And then in last place was Tyler. The main areas that I want to point out to you is kind of what, what made up those scores are cultural fit and value add and demonstrations. The demonstrations is pretty straightforward. This is their ability to meet the functional needs that we have. They scored the highest with Workday. They had 13,000 points, followed closely by the Oracle products, and then Tyler was a distant third. The cultural fit and value add, Workday also came out front, primarily because Workday is the one system that we feel is going to be able to avail us to eliminate all those outstanding systems. Some of the other ones, through the Oracle or Tyler product, we would have to keep some of those existing systems, and that was not our objective. So our post-scoring activities, after we got all of those, we said, well, you know, this is what they are, but let's look at what is the viability comparatively cost-wise to staying on our current system. We looked at the pros and cons of all of those, long-term operational support costs, and those we did over a 10-year period, and then did some more additional reference checking. So this is what the committee came up with. The first option to look at was, is it even viable to stay on PeopleSoft? And the answer to that one is a pretty resounding no, it's not. The highest long-term costs, by a large margin, were staying on PeopleSoft, which translates means it actually costs the city more to do nothing and stay on the current one. And if you're asking yourself, well, why is that the case? You have to remember that PeopleSoft was acquired by Oracle. Their objective is to move people on to the cloud solution. What that means is those who remain on there, they still have to do tax updates, et cetera, and so it still becomes cost, it's still costly for Oracle to maintain this. And so those who remain on the product, as those numbers shrink, they share a higher cost, right? It's kind of a shared cost. The more people that are on it, the better it is for everyone. As that shrinks, the people that are left on it pay more. Oracle is wanting people to move on. We are only one version away from the highest PeopleSoft version available, and yet, and we haven't updated for several, several years. What that means is this is not a long-term viable product. We are currently out of support on the system that we're in. We have had to contract with third-party vendors in order just to keep the support going, and that makes our system vulnerable for crashing. The cost to go to the highest version is the same cost as it is to go to a new system, and actually, it exceeds it. And so it's not, it's not a focus of Oracle's long-term plans. They've only committed to servicing the highest level for 10 years, and that was two years ago. So by the time you get done, you may be looking at a viable system for only a few years. We'd be right back in this process. There's some other ancillary reasons, but it was a resounding no to stay on PeopleSoft. It does, just does not make sense for the city. The Oracle bids. The committee also did not select these. Now, Oracle is a good system. It is a good system, it's long-term viable. It would be an upgrade over our current functionality and that of Tyler, but where it was eliminated is head-to-head in Workday. Oracle's functionality was ranked lower by the team than Workday, and it would not eliminate all of our third-party products. And even though it was ranked lower functionally, it actually had a higher cost. So if it's not as functional and it costs more, it was easy for us to say we would not use Oracle over Workday. So then we looked at Tyler. There are some pros and cons to Tyler, but ultimately, the committee decided not to select that as well. The pros of Tyler, it is focused solely on the public sector. They have a product called Tyler Munis, which I believe is a play on municipalities, but...
Sort of awkward.
Yeah. Oh, you've got familiar with it, or?
No, I just think it's a weird name.
Yeah. It is a smaller company, which may provide more personal attention. When I say smaller company, it's not like a teeny little company. It's a big company, but they're not as large as some of the other players in the H R field. And it was the lowest price, but I have to let you know that over the course of 10 years, it was only incrementally lower for notably less functionality. I think the delta on this over a 10-year period was 300,000, so about 30,000 a year. The cons are it fails to eliminate the majority of our fragmented H R systems. We would still have to use a lot of it. Its workflow was not as good as other systems that we looked at, so we'd have to make decisions about whether to keep our workflows within Sire or Onbase, et cetera. And it's not as adaptable over the long term because of its functionality. So the surprise, the ultimate recommendation from the committee was to go with Workday as the recommended solution. This is the one product that we feel that we can eliminate all of our other systems and put them under one roof. It had the highest scoring functional requirements for us. It is technologically superior, and I won't get into too much details, but this is a system, the person who founded Workday actually came from PeopleSoft. He recognized a need and built that system for a cloud solution from the, from the very beginning. And so its integrations are all internal. It is user-friendly, and it has a large Workday community and third-party network. So as some of the other departments have come to us, they have systems of their own. They are looking for integration into the H R product because that's where the information that they want, which is employees and how much they make, so they can do scheduling and other things. Workday was the one that we felt was the best to integrate with any of those other types of solutions. The cons are the risks of this. It is priced higher than Tyler, but as I said, it's only incremental based on the functionality. I believe that that is well worth it. It is a robust system, so it's going to take a lot of effort to fully capitalize on all the functionality. And change management challenge. Now, I go back and forth between putting this as a pro or a con because we will have to learn new processes, but they'll be so much better processes that we're hoping people are excited about it. We are definitely excited about moving forward with it. Incidentally, on the large Workday community, there are several agencies in Utah itself that use this product. One of the most recent ones is Utah County down the street. We met with them extensively about their experience with Workday and received very positive reviews. A lot of, some of the other big employers in this state use it. Vivint, I H C, I believe is now on it. So as far as the funding, I'm going to turn this over to John, but one thing to note is, as far as the annual budgetary impact, the cost of running Workday year to year is essentially the same as it is on our current product. So that doesn't really impact our overall budget. Where the cost impact comes in is on how much it costs to actually get it in place, which is a significant effort. When you look at this number, you're like, well, that's a lot of number to turn on a computer system. You're talking decades of data that has to be converted into that system, people coming in, meeting with us about all of our systems, our processes and workflows, and getting them all up and done. So there's a plan in place. I'm going to turn that over to John to take it from there. Are there any questions before that?
The long-term costs, you know, you said the current system costs more long-term. It included these one times.
Yes.
So we typically do what we call a T C O analysis, or total cost of ownership, and we look typically over a 10-year period, and that's the basis on which we compare these. So we take the, the implementation costs, the annual costs, any staffing costs associated with it, any cost savings from eliminating some of these redundant systems, and calculate a 10-year T C O number. And Workday was the best option of all of those on a 10-year analysis.
You do raise a good point, though, because one of the things, this is basically the cost of implementing the system. When we looked at the cost of upgrading PeopleSoft, so we're on version 9.1, and to go to 9.2, just an upgrade based on their quote to us was higher than this amount by itself. So that was kind of like, well, that makes no sense, so. Good.
Okay. So as Daniel mentioned, the challenge is with the solution is how we pay for the implementation costs. And so what we're recommending, and we made this, we had this discussion with our Provo 360 committee and also with administration, would be to do a five-year inter-fund loan with Energy. We've had discussions with Travis about this. It would be at 2.5%. Basically, what the state has given us guidelines is if we do inter-fund loans, there needs to be a set time and timeframe, there needs to be a clear repayment stream, and the rate needs to at least be equal to the state pool rate, which 2.5% gives us a good, gives us a little bit of margin there. It also gives Energy a little more of a return. But the annual payment is 470,000 over that five-year term. When we funded the Provo 360 project, we, we had the general fund pick up 50% because roughly that's the ballpark. They actually have a few more employees in that, but that's the ballpark. And then Energy, 25%, and Public Works, 25%. And I would just mention a couple of things. What our recommendation would be, would be to come back to council in two weeks and ask the council to approve this inter-fund loan because it has to be approved by resolution. But the actual funding on the general fund, the 235,000, it's not an easy thing, but our recommendation would be is we go through the budget process over the next couple of months, and we deliver to the, deliver to the council on the 1st of May, the budget, and including that is funding for that 235,000. And so the same place that you pay for new officers, the same place that you look at all supplemental requests, this would be coming out of that same bucket. Similar also to the state retirement change that we just talked about for public safety comes out of that as well. And, and the bottom line is, is that it's going to mean less for other things that we would all like to do. And so I think we want to be open and upfront. The other thing that we need to be aware of is when you look at Energy and Public Works, it has an impact there, too. As Dave Decker goes in and, and looks at rate increases, or as Travis looks at rate increases, ideally, those rate increases, particularly for Public Works, are all for infrastructure, okay? Because that's where our big needs are. But this would take a portion of that out of that infrastructure because this is something that was needed for an energy system. I would also say that, you know, we can't pay our employees and meet a lot of our needs without a valid H R system. As, as Daniel's talked about, the option of doing nothing is, is not a good option because we're on an unsupported system that is dying, and there could be some concerns about if something were to happen with our data or if something were to happen with support, that we're in a, we're in a bad position. And so anyway, that gives you a little bit of a background, but what we wanted to do is just get a general sense on the council, on their support. And if there is general support, then what we would recommend is that we come back to council in two weeks to discuss and propose this inter-fund loan.
Do we need a motion on that?
Well, I think we're hearing, we're hearing from Cliff that, I don't know if you're comfortable with having a motion in a work session or not.
Well, we just put on the agenda.
John, any chance between now and then we can get an estimate even for surplus? Estimates for next, the challenge I have with approving or motioning to approve, you know, or you were, you know, anything that we approve at this point, we don't know what we're even, we don't know the number yet.
And that is fair. And right now, we are in the process, we're supposed to hear back from all of our departments on the, their employee information so we can make sure that our employee budget records are up to date. But yeah, I would say that our goal, and we would plan on coming back in two weeks and also giving you a little bit of a peek on what we're looking at with challenges with the budget.
That'd be great.
That's, that's a fair point.
Okay.
It's three weeks.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
It's the 31st? Okay. That actually helps us a little bit, too, as far as being ready on that, too. So any other questions? Yes, Councilman Hardin.
I think one of the reasons why it's best for us not to be making motions, you know, as these individuals come through, it's, what's that?
I just said, because there's still so many more presentations to do.
Yes. Yeah, and, and we don't, and we don't want to tie the administration's hands when putting together the budget and saying, oh, it needs to be this, it needs to be this. We want your best shot with, you know, your expertise, looking at the whole thing rather than bit by bit. But also on some of these, I mean, if there is an administrative need to give feedback sooner, and as long as the administration's okay, you know, I'm comfortable as long as, as long as everyone agrees that, you know, this is something that would be helpful to the administration, you know, I'm willing to get to work on that. The other thing is, on this specific request, it sure sounds like, you know, we need an H R system. It sounds like it's more expensive to not do anything, and you talk about this is going to impact Energy, it's going to impact Public Works, but Energy and Public Works depends on, unless I'm missing something, they depend on the software, they depend on these services.
They do.
To provide the services for our residents. So to me, it's almost, you know, that request makes sense because it's what's needed to provide the services that they're tasked with.
I appreciate that comment. So if we're supportive, we'll come back in three weeks then, and we'll try to have kind of a little high-level peek of where we look, where we're looking at with surpluses and where we're at. And then if, if council fills, couple of them. One of the things that we're struggling with, as Daniel mentioned, is just the time sensitivity of, as if we're going to move forward with this, getting it rolling so that we don't, we can save some of those Oracle costs and also work with these vendors while things are still fresh, specifically Workday. So, okay, well, that's helpful, and we'll plan with that. Any other questions for Daniel or myself?
Thank you, John. We're, we're out of time, so we'll...
Okay.
We appreciate your presentation. Thank you, Daniel. Take a five-minute break. We're, a couple of minutes over, so if you can take it back. K S A P, that would be great.
Really, you know, are you getting so lost in this?
But that little blue there, we do a huge book sale two or three times a year that brings in additional money that goes to our program efforts at the library. And then in orange, I think all of you have been to the library, we have that beautiful ballroom that we've used a number of times in the past four days with our activities, but we also rent it out. And so we have a lot of weddings. We put on about, facilitate about 120, 125 weddings, receptions a year. And so we always try to keep our rates about middle range with other wedding reception type of businesses in town. And then we get a small amount from our interest income. What is not said here that I wanted to make sure you understand is the library has two savings accounts essentially. One is our ending fund balance. And my staff will tell you, for good and for ill, I'm a real skinflint sometimes, and I really watch our dollars. When it comes to the library building, as you're going to see, books, bikes, and buildings in just a second, it takes a lot of money to run the Academy Square facility. And we need to make sure that when a boiler blows up like we had about 10 years ago, and we had a $60,000, $60,000 price tag, that we have that money set aside to deal with those types of issues. We've been in the building now for almost 20 years. We just replaced carpet two years ago, and that was a quarter of a million dollar project. That was a huge project. So we have that savings account that is somewhere in the neighborhood of about 3.3, 3.4 to 3.5 million dollars. It's a good, healthy ending fund balance. Our regular budget this year will probably be about four and a half million. So you can see, it's almost 100% in savings. What we also have is when we completed the Academy project many years ago, we had $1.1 million left over. And this is my third library building, and that's never happened to me before. And all of that money was donated money that came in to support the Academy project. That went into our library legacy endowment fund. And I had a handshake agreement with Mayor Billings at the time that we would let that grow to a 2 million point, and then hopefully just use the interest on those dollars to help take care of the building. And so when we took out, I think if I remember, John, I think we took $200,000 out of that account to help with that 250 price tag for carpet. And so we have also right at $2 million in that legacy endowment fund. So you put the $2, two amounts together, and we have about $5.5 million in savings. That's the big reason why we have not raised the mill levy. Because as we have grown, even though the mill levy has dropped as far as a percentage, our growth has kind of offset that. And so we don't anticipate coming back to you and increase our mill levy for a number of years. We'll see what happens with the increased growth that we have in the future. But we feel really good. Most of my colleagues in the state would love to have that type of an ending fund balance and a savings account to draw on during some real rainy daytimes. And so there we go. So that's pretty much where our money comes from. Okay, go ahead, Cindy. And then just generally, we have about 61 to 62% of our budget that is devoted to our staff. We now have 94...
95.
Five, I think, we were arguing about this the other day. We have 95 staff at the library, and, but only 20, two of those are full-time. We really rely heavily on our part-time staff. On the other hand, when my colleagues around the country had to lay off staff and shut their doors for some times, they were having to do that because this number was often in the mid-80s because they had so many full-time staff along with all the benefit packages. So this has allowed us to stay, to live with a budget that we can live with because we have just a few full-time staff. Operating expenses, about 28%. We spend about, about 11 to 12% on new materials. That's books and downloadable and DVDs and those type of things. And then in green, oh, excuse me, that's our digital period. The operating expenses will be, yeah, excuse me, this is our books and digital stuff. This will be, we pay for everything. Electrical, gas, water, you name it, that's part of our budget. Facilities, repairs, replacements, that comes all out of that operating expenses. Cindy? And so our challenge is dealing with this balance of books, go ahead, bikes and buildings, and keeping that balance together and trying to meet all the demands of each thing. When I first entered the field 41 years ago, what we had was books and some cassette tapes. Those are the formats. Today, there's about six different formats, and there's always somebody that wants to have a book that's, they can hold, somebody that wants a downloadable, somebody that wants it on a CD, DVD or CD. And we have all of these formats to try to support, as well as the cost of the building, and we have computers and wireless and all of that that's available for our public. It's a constant juggling act. Next. And so beyond, I was also asked by Cliff to kind of talk briefly about our responses to some of the general plan items. And so this one, 1.4.2.1, consider gathering in social spaces within the context of each neighborhood. And so we have a lot of gathering spaces in our library. We had three small groups, study rooms, but things have changed educationally, and there's more collaborative efforts going on between students and others. So we did some subdividing of a room upstairs in the new wing and built out three additional study spaces. Next. This is one of our study spaces, this is our smart room, which allows students and others just to plug in and things show up on the screen, and they can work together on projects and things. Like last night, we had a big crowd. This is Brandon Mall. Some of you may know him from your kids' or grandkids' reading. And Brandon is a local author, and he comes to our library once or twice every two to three years. And we always have 300, 400, 500 people for Brandon. He's a big hit. But this is really, we can do some amazing things because of our spaces. We have a lot of nonprofit groups, we have some businesses. We have a business in our ballroom right now that's using it as a gathering spot. And this is the BSA meetings. We have the Republican Women's Group and all kinds of different groups that come in. We facilitate about 1,400 meetings a year and allowing our public to come use us. Next.
Is that a revenue stream?
It is. Matter of fact, Cindy, go back to that. When we saw earlier with the revenues, I think it was in orange, we bring in about, our goal and challenge by Mayor Billings when we opened was that we would bring in about the same amount of money that we would spend on our staffing to support that. So we're not taking money from books, materials, and other traditional library sources. We bring that in. Go ahead. Oh, thank you, Cindy. Catch us up. And next one is 5.4.10, institute programs in the library that educate citizens about various cultures, beliefs, traditions, and heritage. We do this all the time. We have Monday night programs, and many of those are cultural-based type of programs. And these are very typical. We have an island, we have the Swiss group, we had a Native American dance group. You can see an African-American group. We have Christmas around the world. We do these things all the time. It's just a matter, of course, what we do. And then 5.4.11, we really have a robust calendar. We do a lot of programs at the library, even just children's programs, storytimes. We do 24 to 25 storytimes a week, just storytimes, after-school programs, special events. We just had our fairy tea. I'm sorry that none of you were there. You could have seen me in my, my blue tights, and I look just very regal, don't you think, Cliff?
Yeah.
And so we have a robust calendar. We're just launching, we're very excited about it. We're launching a new app that will have our calendar and scheduling and appointment type of things on both iPhones and for Androids. We've just done a build out with that and really excited about that. 6.4.1, raise awareness of local history, culture, and historic sites. We have a lot of groups, Utah Historical Society and others come to the library often to present things about, about our history locally and nationally. Next. This is one of our displays in our special collections office. I think you have some connection with this man?
Yes.
Yes, he does. And, and so we do, we recognize the history of our community. We have lectures and presentations. This author was just in talking about one of the first Utah senators, female senators in the state. I think it was the Canon, wasn't it? Carla?
Martha.
Yep. And so we do a lot of these type of things to help us reach that goal. Next. We have a lot of arts, dance, we have music, we have drama. The Utah, excuse me, the BYU University comes over quite often and does some small snippets of plays and productions for our Monday night programs as well. Six years ago, we opened the fourth floor that used to be our attic and just a storage. We turned it into an exhibition space, and we have all kinds of wonderful exhibits. Right now, we have a two-time Caldecott Award winner, Sophie Blackall, who was just here last night to open us the exhibit with us, a show of all of her artwork, and it's just a beautiful show. So we try to bring in artistic, historic, and scientific exhibits up there. Here's, matter of fact, this is a dancer from a couple of years ago. We always bring in some ballet dancers, and here's some of our fairies that are there for the fairy tea. This is a, those of you who know Harry Potter, this is our effort to help our young wizards grow some plants through magic. Another one of our little ones getting involved with some musician. And then we also have a gallery on our main second floor. This supports local artists, and we'll change that out about every six to eight weeks. And we bring in a lot of authors, about 40 to 45 authors a year we bring in. And this is Ali Conde, one of our local authors. Go back, Cindy, real fast. This is Cressida Cowell. She's from England. She was on a tour, and she wrote the books How to Train Your Dragon that was turned into a variety of different movies. Go ahead. And that's it. So in a nutshell, I think I've taken like three minutes more than I should have. That's where our budget comes from, that's where our expenditures go, and any questions I can answer for you? Wanted to give you a good thumbnail of why we're different, and I'm grateful that we're different. We'll embrace that because it really helps our budget. Otherwise, I'm arguing with Gary for money, and I would lose to Gary every time. Great, thank you so much. Don't hesitate to call or drop me an email if you ever have a question about the library or the budget.
We love the library and we're grateful for your service.
Thank you, George.
I have my Libby app on my phone. I use it all the time.
There you go. Do you have Canopy?
I don't know.
Okay, Canopy, you can get movies now too, and stream them. Thank you all.
All right, we'll move on to number five. Presentation regarding the regulation of short-term rentals. This will be presented by John Magnus, our policy analyst. We have 20 minutes for this.
Go quick. So when I first got here, I was asked to look at short-term rentals, what's happening, what kind of effect do they have on the town? So what are short-term rentals? Basically, another modern version of vacation rentals. When I was a kid, we'd rent a house for a week up in Tahoe. We used to use a real estate agent for that. Not anymore, you can do it through Airbnb. So it's just a peer-to-peer platform now where I can actually talk to the owner of the property, and the owner of the property can advertise it without having to go through a middleman. They all do it online. Some of it's for the entire house. People have a secondary house, so they rent it out. Sometimes it's just a room in a residence. If you have a spare room, you can capitalize on it by renting it out on Airbnb. Sometimes it's a secondary apartment, you have a basement apartment, or you have a secondary dwelling in your house, you can rent them out. Some of it is even like RV trailers, buses. There was a teepee on it. That wasn't in Provo, the teepee wasn't. But it's those kind of things. And there was a yurt too somewhere up north in Utah. So those are what's being used for short-term rentals.
Like a yurt in someone's backyard or?
A yurt in someone's backyard, yep.
I don't know.
And so are the RV trailers. The users of short-term rentals, the guests, people who actually rent them, they tend to be users, they tend to be younger. What they're seeing is a Generation Z, which is the oldest one right now, it's 23, 24, depending who you are or who you listen to. They're making up about 14% of the rental market, and they're a very tiny sliver, but they're making up a tiny sliver of population, but they're taking up a good chunk of the Airbnb market. What they're looking for is a real experience in town. They don't want to go to a hotel. They want to feel the town the way it is. They're mostly homeowners with extra space, homeowners with secondary homes, and they tend to be older. They tend to be people coming into retirement age. It's a way for them to maintain their house and get extra income as they retire. Growth is between 6% and 17% annually, depending on which author you want to listen to. Generation Z is growing, and so is their use of it. And the other thing to think about is a once-in-a-lifetime event. There was a study that actually looked at what happened when the Pope went to Philadelphia. Wasn't enough hotel rooms. They saw 400% increase on Airbnb. So what does that do for Provo? If you guys get the Olympics back here, that's going to be a once-in-a-lifetime event, and that will drive up the short-term rentals. Economic models of short-term rentals. Most basics, homeowner has extra space or an extra house, looking to make the extra revenue. Same with an owner of a second home. Maybe their vacation home, they're going to rent it out part-time on Airbnb for the short-term rental. Problem is, there's also people coming into the market who are taking their long-term rentals and turn them into short-term rentals because they can make more money. And the last one, the most troubling, is investors buying homes in desirable areas and turn them into nothing but short-term rentals to go out on that market. That's the one that's causing problems.
So can I ask a question right there?
Sure.
So I've worked with communities like Springdale and Moab, St. George.
Moab has a problem.
Moab and Springdale have problems. But something like that, investors buying homes exclusively to rent on a short-term market, that would be less common here than in a tourism-driven market, right?
We'll get into that. There's somebody in town who owns seven. Economic benefits, the homeowners increase revenue, increasing their home value. There's the studies are showing that in desirable areas, the houses do increase approximating to Airbnb. Lowest local jurisdictions, increase in bed tax, increase in sales tax, increase in property value, and increase in tourism. So there is a plus side to this for the jurisdictions. There are plus sides for both sides. Problems associated with, lots of affordable housing. Areas that have high tourism and a lot of short-term rentals have seen their affordable housing disappear. Tends to be, there was one study out of Colorado, it was looking at the small towns like Breckenridge, basically their affordable housing has disappeared because people came in and bought them up the housing to turn them into short-term rentals. And then you see gentrification of neighborhoods, increased traffic, you have the bad host, someone who just buys it solely for a short-term rental. They really don't care about the neighborhood, they don't care about the house, it's an investment, they'll depreciate it on their taxes, and after five, six years, they'll get rid of it and sell it off. Bad guest, there's noise associated with it, overcrowding, they have too many people in the house, behavior's not compatible with their local neighborhoods. The legal issues for regulating short-term. One is the takings issue. Can you regulate these without running out of takings? Short answer is yes. These fall under the lowest forms of protection for takings. Equal protection, that one's a little dicier. If, depending on how you regulate it, you are going to have to make some distinctions about this. If you treat it like it was a bread and breakfast, and you ever went into the future and tried to bifurcate the two, make new regulations for both of them, you could run into an issue because you'd be running against the equal protection clause. Telecommunications Act of 1966 will not let you regulate Airbnb or any of the platforms. You cannot touch them. They can hide behind that all day, the courts can help it out. Utah State Code will not let you use a listing on Airbnb as a reason to violate them. Makes it very hard code enforcement. Provo to glance. So what I did, I went with the presidential weekend, went on Airbnb, opened it up, you know, to whatever they had. This is what I found, 134 units. 19 were single-family homes. That meant I could rent the whole house, no one would be there. 15 were apartments, same thing. I didn't have to share an apartment. It was 10 condos townhomes, 45 shared units. That means you were renting a room inside one of the units, two second dwellings, and the balance of them were not actually in Provo itself. Code enforcement for a two-year, two calendar year, 37 complaints, 26 are closed, is unfounded or compliant, and 11 are still open.
So am I reading that correctly? In the last two years, we've had 37 complaints, and none of them have ended into any sort of action against the listener?
From my understanding, yes. They're closed, is unfounded, or compliant.
Well, let me, so 26 unfounded or compliant probably means they came into compliance, and so there are no actions taken.
11 are still open. It's difficult for them because they can't just use the listing. They actually have to prove it. They have to get someone does, who's used it, actually squeal on the owner. Hey, regulating short-term. You can keep it as currently, and it's still going to be difficult. Nothing's really going to change, difficult enforce. We can't keep track of our rentals, we can't keep track of what we're losing, we can't control people buying multiple homes, turning them into short-term rentals. Expand the bed and breakfast ordinance to include short-term rentals. That can be done pretty easily. They're very similar. Problem is, you might open it up to bed, bed and breakfasts going into areas you don't want. And if you try to bifurcate the two, you could run into an equal protection issue. Or you can create a whole new ordinance to deal with short-term rentals, and that, the best thing to do would be to create a whole new license just for them, because at the licensing is where you can get to Airbnb. There's a court case out of the Ninth Circuit that was upheld, basically said that the transaction between the host and Airbnb as a financial attraction does not run afoul of the telecommunications act. So that was a case out of Santa Monica, and they prevailed. It's illegal in Santa Monica for Airbnb to do business with hosts that aren't licensed by the city. And Airbnb is such a big company, they're binding by it. It's also a way to make sure you're getting your tax revenue. Any questions?
It seems to me that one of the chief questions would be if we're going to regulate In other words, if we want to maximize on the benefits and minimize the negative consequences, it seems to me that the negative consequence that's most important to minimize is the landowner or the investor who buys properties up and they're exclusively for short-term rentals.
Right, I know my report.
I can see the economic benefits and local benefits of a flexible system that allows people to bring in a little bit of extra income, it brings in, you know, people for events that come to Provo. That doesn't seem to be as disruptive to lifestyle, doesn't seem to be disruptive to neighborhoods with maybe the possible exception of some bad guests, as you point out, but it seems like that, that one issue is the stickiest one.
Right. And you can't get by, some cities, and I know that paper's kind of long, I was going to try to cut it down for you guys, but it just got so hard. There are some jurisdictions that have only allowed you one. You can either rent your whole house, or you can rent a room, but you can only have one license. So if you do, like the person that owns seven here, he can get a license for one of them, and the other six will have to go back into the long-term market. And I don't think the courts would say that it would be a taking because the value of the house isn't depreciated, he can still rent it. So it wouldn't be a taking in the court's eyes because you would have to depreciate the value of the property down to zero before the court would start hearing them say. And you haven't depreciated. He could sell it for what it's worth, or he could rent it, one or the other. It is a guidance. There is a company in Utah that has 48 listings throughout Utah. Not, they have two here in Provo, but so the model is here in Utah. It's just, we don't know what we have on the ground right now. Like I said, we had a snapshot time, that was a presidential weekend just to see what we had.
So 137 units, only some, like what, two-thirds of those were the entire place? So let's say there's 100 that are?
Well, it wasn't in 137 because the rest were not even?
What about 20 single-family houses?
What is that? 19 single, 15 apartments, 10 condos.
135, 45. So I guess, I'm not trying to make light of it, but that doesn't seem like a huge problem? I mean? I don't, I don't, I don't know, though, but where did, where did we go? I mean, are we, are we worried we're going to get to 450 or 4,500 or? Because at 45, I'm kind of like?
Well, what the problem is, is that when you get Airbnb started, in the, if you read the paper, I was, they tend to cluster. And when they start clustering, what happens is you get gentrification and you get prices, the price of houses goes up substantially. It goes higher than the normal curve.
They cluster within a city or they cluster in a city?
They clustered in a location, in a block.
Part of that's probably because they're, they're only allowed technically in where we can have hotels.
This is for, it was the status quo.
Oh, okay. Got it. So even then, because people want to go to specific parts of town.
Right. New York and LA have had the worst of it, and they had the worst of the clustering.
Looked like they're high tourism destinations.
Right. But when you have, like Manhattan, on the center tip, 4,000 other units also turned into Airbnbs in the span of a year, and the housing prices were going up. It's about 17% above the curve.
So just in general, I mean, what does the city think of these Airbnbs? I mean, are we concerned? Are we worried where this is going to go or?
Historically, neighborhoods have been concerned, and again, we've had a few notable issues. We had one in the River Bottoms a few years ago that was a very large house, I don't know, 10 bedrooms, and it became kind of?
Party house type.
A party house. Sometimes it was a huge family that would come in, and you'd have, you know, 20 cars that were parking all up and down the streets and, you know, the, and so we actually ended up, I think, taking legal action on that one.
Is that the, like a 10,000 square foot house?
It could have been.
Side fast forward card?
Yeah, they're, I think.
They had a basketball court. They're listening again, too.
It was a corporate retreat.
Well, they're back on Airbnb.
Yeah, we were doing things like that.
So, so there have been, there have been some notable challenges, and I think, again, part of the concern has been if they were to cluster, for example, in the tree streets or to cluster in, you know, up near the mouth of the canyon where people might want to be skiing Sundance and doing whatever, does that now create a challenge for the neighborhood? And so the code is, John, and I apologize for having to leave, as John probably indicated, code is a 30-day, you know, minimum rental period in single-family neighborhoods, and that obviously doesn't work for the Airbnb crowd. So we've heard from developers, we've heard from small infill developers who have wanted to build specifically, you know, a, a unit for, you know, multiple dwelling units, you know, multifamily facility that would be solely focused on, on the Airbnb group. And of course, the answer is, that has worked for us unless you're a hotel. But, so the question's been raised a number of times, is our ordinance in the right place? Is it not in the right place? And I think those are the kinds of questions we typically get.
Just briefly, we've had a few committee meetings, other committees, over a year, year and a half, whatever. You can even correct me if I wronged it, but my, my characterization of our policy towards Airbnb, short-term rentals, I should say, short-term rentals in the past has been kind of a don't ask, don't tell, where technically it's only legal in areas where, where hotels are legal. And that's, that's never been a problem. There's been no concern about those areas. It's, it's where they're operating outside of that, where it's technically not allowed. We know what's happening. We know it's not huge numbers, though, I mean, that's, that's, again, just one snapshot where I think we had, we had some companies come and demo some software, and so instead of just doing Airbnb, they went across all the different ones, and I want to say, and that's probably a quarter of what we probably think exists now.
Right. Gary's here to talk about that.
I apologize. My thought is, I, my personal, without having studied all of it, but just where I'm at right now is, I think it would be good to regulate, rather than just saying, nope, it's not allowed, knowing that it's going to happen anyways, and we're kind of fighting against the flow. Say, determine what makes sense, where we can protect and, and, and support our neighborhoods, but also realize that there's a lot of benefits here. Like, like was said, how do we, how do we maximize the benefits and minimize the negative effects? And I think there are, there's a lot of different ways that it's done, there's a lot of ways that it can be done. Mr. Magnus suggested a couple, but I do think it's now's the time to kind of... But, I do think it's now's the time to kind of maybe get ahead of it before it becomes even more prevalent and, and do something that makes sense for all parties.
And to Mr. Harding's point, I see in my own neighborhood, a home that was not well-kept, on a street that's not well-kept, you know, it's turned into an Airbnb. The quality of that house right there improved dramatically, improved dramatically. So, to me, I see a lot of potential in, in us having the opportunity to improve housing stock. I've seen something similar happen on Twenty-two Hundred North.
And Gary's here to talk about the, the software on the scrape, which you guys wanted.
Yes, we, we entered into a contract with a company that goes out and scrapes software. And it's across all platforms, you know, VRBO, Airbnb. When they came in before, they had approximately two hundred and eighty-four individual properties that were listed. Now, they ran it for us again and we've got three hundred and thirty-seven or so, about fifty more, individual properties. One of the things, we're still working with them, going through to analyze the data and get all that information, but they'll, they'll scrape it once a month for us. And they'll help us figure out, you know, are they single-family homes? Are they apartments? Are they owner-occupied? Are they not? One of the big issues, that's a big trend, is a homeowner will have a rumor of order and our ordinance allows for rumors and orders in homes. And they'll come in and they'll rent out occasionally a, a room in their house. We also have second kitchen ordinances where you can have two kitchens in a home, but no rumors and borders. And so, there's a lot of little policy questions around this to, to really decide what we want to do. The homeowner that lives in their home all the time and rents out a basement typically has not been a big problem. It's been, the, and Wayne mentioned it earlier, we had down in the River Bottoms, a, I think it was a ten thousand square foot home and they had a basketball court and they're renting it out and they had...
You can rent that one by floors. You don't rent the whole thing. They'll run, they'll cut it up at the floors now.
Yeah, or, or they'll have a big corporate retreat and they'll have thirty cars then.
We had our, we had our retreat at Provo Power. Let's reconsider.
So, going forward, if you guys wanted to, to discuss this, because there's many ways to regulate, literature is full of ideas on how to do this. Probably be formed a committee or assigned to one of the committees that you have and look at it and start creating regulation.
But the best part would be to make it a separate license because at that license point is where you can control Airbnb.
We would recommend that, we think it does need to be licensed in some fashion, but the extent of that licensing, we don't have a recommendation today other than I would agree that it should be a separate short-term rental license for it. Now, how and what we do with people that may be a homeowner that's renting out an individual room and how that interfaces with our owner-occupy, our rumor and border ordinance with that is, I think, a separate issue that we need to figure out. But in general, I think we do need to regulate them. We do need to get our arms around them. And by regulating them and requiring a license, it will help us deal with the problem situations much easier than if we did not have a license.
Keep track of your affordable housing to see if you're losing long-term rentals to short-term rental market.
And at the same time, you probably presumably have more power to, to gain the economic benefits from it, right? Is this a discussion Dave and Shannon for the zoning or is this more appropriately in housing where, where...
It started as one of the items under the strategic plan for zoning, just FYI.
Well, I'm on both of those committees.
Would you, would you wanna just take a preliminary look at it and make a recommendation to us about how you wanna proceed?
I'd be very interested in observing on that, if I can be for this.
All right, thank you, John. Thank you, Gary, for being here as well, answering some questions. We'll move on to item number, are we on six? Yes, number six. Presentation regarding stormwater quality updates from Rob Hunter, Public Works Engineer. Thank you. We have fifteen minutes for this item.
Who do, I realized, oh, Dr. Griff.
Yeah, sorry.
So, this is probably number, what is it, number three for the presentation we've done in a year, but some of you are new to the council and so, I should probably kinda catch you up as to what we have done so far. This is kind of the, the last step in our, in our regulations to get them all up to date. The first thing is, about a year ago, last January, I believe it was, we updated our Storm Drain Master Plan, which basically looks and says the, the main front lines throughout the city, based off of regulations, bringing our regulations up to kind of current standards, what size facilities would we need or the ones that we have, big enough or do we need to build bigger? And then we set our, our budgets based off of that, based off of the plan to build out over the next twenty-five or thirty years. So, we did that back in January. We were kinda caught between, we had that and we needed to update our drainage manual. Title eighteen and our drainage manual are really the two places that, that hold stormwater criteria. And so, we needed to update that to, to then match what we had decided for our master plan. But, we were caught kind of between, we had the, the master plan done and needed to update it, but there were these upcoming water quality regulations that I'll get into from the state that, that were delayed a couple of different times of being implemented. And so, back in December, I think is when we came back here to the council and we got our, our drainage manual updated and we had told you all that we're here at the time, that we would be coming back here in March when the state water quality retention standard went into place and we'd have to update it again. We just didn't wanna wait any longer to, to get our, the main bulk of our manual matching what our master plan had set for us. So, that's kinda what has happened in the past and now we're here at the point to where March is when the state retention standard goes into effect. And so, I, so now we're changing things like that. It's, so they, it went into effect, the, there's a state standard and I'll get into what that is, went into effect on March first. It is through the cities, it's called an MS4 permit for short, but it's a municipal separate storm sewer system. Basically, if you have a big storm drain system, if you're a municipality and you have a storm drain system, before you can discharge or for you to be able to discharge into state waters, and state waters include, the three places where we discharge are the Provo River, Utah Lake and then the state separates Provo Bay from the rest of Utah Lake. And so, those are the three places we discharge. Before we can discharge there, they say you have to implement, there's a lot of different regulations that are included in that, in that permit, a lot of different responsibilities that we have. But basically, you have to do all these things so that you can discharge downstream and we can, we can reasonably expect that, that it's going to be, that the stormwater is gonna be cleaned up a little before it gets discharged. So, the standard that's going into effect, that, or that went into effect on March first, is to retain what it turned out being, there were recent changes just through these last months, that we were heavily involved in coordinating and negotiating these, these changes that makes it easier, simplifies the process of being able to implement these standards. But what it ended up being is, is the eightieth percentile storm, which means basically after you retain onsite, meaning you don't discharge it offsite, you got to retain, depending on where you are in Provo, point four-four to point five inches, so about half an inch. It applies to projects that are an acre or above and if you are a new development, something that was previously on undeveloped land, you have to retain the runoff from your entire site. If you are redevelopment, in other words, there was something there, a development there and you were taking that out and replacing it or you're just making some modifications to it, if you, you can either reduce your hard surface, which would in turn reduce your runoff. If you re, if you increase it, but it's by less than ten percent, then you have, just have to show some increase in the retention. You have to do something better than what you did before, but if you increase it by more than ten percent, then you have to apply that eightieth percentile where you have to, you have to capture that half an inch off of the new hard surface, anything that was added. Basically, they're saying, what we built so far has been built, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna try to reverse the clock on that, but we're gonna try to retain all new development going forward. You have to do that through low-impact development. And before I, so I'll get into what low-impact development is, but the overall, the overall thought is, once again, we're trying to lower the impact of development on downstream systems. So, they've done studies over the last several years. The last update was done in twenty sixteen and they're saying that there's a growing number of state streams and lakes that are impaired, meaning that there's, there's some issue with it. Either they have too, too many, too much phosphorus and nitrogen, which is part of what contributes to the algal blooms on the lake. There could be, in other places, it's heavy metals on portions of the Provo River. It's not that there's too much of anything in there, it's just that there's too little life, basically. So, there's a growing number of, of these water bodies that are repaired. They're trying to, a lot of it is caused by development, according to their studies and so, they're trying to reduce the impact of development on the, on the streams. And so, low-impact development, which is basically trying to capture and infiltrate more onsite, even though you put it in hard surface, you're, you're directing it to areas that will, that will infiltrate it onsite. That can reduce your volume and your P grade, which, which will stop erosion, can help stop erosion in, in downstream creeks and rivers. It'll better match the natural hydrologic cycle, which I, I can show you here real quick. It'll keep those pollutants from discharging in the downstream water bodies and it can also help lower the temperatures, which is important for fish habitat. Higher temperatures can kill a lot of fish, even if everything else is, is okay. So, I, when they say, trying to better match the, the pre-development hydrology, basically what it is, if you look up here, this is the average. They did a, a national study and they said, what's the average, on average, what happens when it rains throughout the, the US? And they, they came up with rough numbers of, for every drop of rainfall, only about ten percent of that turns into runoff. Fifty percent is infiltrated into the ground, forty percent is evaporatranspirated, either like through vegetation or just evaporation. You can kinda see as you go through, it gets, more of it turns into runoff, runoff, less of it infiltrates to where if you have a very highly urbanized area with a lot of hard surface, then only about fifteen percent turns into infiltration, about fifty-five percent, volume-wise, turns into runoff. So, volume-wise, you're, they, they found that it's about five times if you have a highly urbanized area. And so, they're trying to, they're just trying to slow that down. Low-impact development, most of you probably have, have heard these things. It's been going on a lot of places for, for decades now, but there's a state manual that came out that identified twelve different, they call them best manager practices, they're, they're different types of facilities that can be used in this. Rain gardens, fire retention cells, these that you see here, you direct it to it, you put some vegetation in there, which can help uptake some of those nutrients and then the rest of it is infiltrated into the ground. Green roofs, permeable pavement, pervious pavement, harvest and reuse where you capture it and then you use that to irrigate your lawns. All those type of things are, are things they identify.
Could I ask a question about those, those wells? What did you call that?
Fire retention cells.
So, those cells, yeah, fire retention cells. I mean, I, I, that makes me feel a little better about some of the things I see in the middle of parking lots. But what bothers me is that they're also then, they put grass and then they water the grass?
Yeah.
So, it seems like it defeats the purpose because you're, first of all, spraying water all over the parking lot and not on the grass? And then it's like, well, if you're, if the purpose of having that is better water retention and you're just spraying water on it anyway.
Yeah.
So, is there, I mean, it seems to me that the best practice would be to have that, but have it be drought-tolerant plants, at least in this environment, right? Or something like that, that doesn't require watering?
There, there are, there are plants. We don't, we don't get to the, to regulating to that, to that level. I mean, there, there is guidance in the manual and directed to the manual. There is guidance in the manual in terms of picking drought-tolerant plants, picking, I mean, in, in our area, salt-tolerant plants for, during the winter. And, and to that level, it's, it's guidance because one of the benefits to low-impact development is, is if you can have it be self-sustaining and you don't need to water it. In, in some semi-arid areas like we're in, they found that it's, it's hard to, it's hard to find plants that will both withstand sitting in water for a long time and times where, I mean, it can go a couple of months without, without us seeing water. And so, not that those plants can't be found and not that a lot of times it can't work, we give them, we, we point them towards, towards the guidance, but at this point, we're not regulating saying you have to pick these plants.
The, the main point, if I understand this right, the main point of all of these new regulations or whatever is to reduce the amount of storm water that we're directing directly into our water bodies as well as improving the quality of water that enters into the...
Yeah, so the, so the number one is, is improving the, the quality.
Okay.
Is, is to, is to reduce the amount of pollutants that are getting to our water bodies. And, and the, the added benefit of doing it through low-impact development is that you're, you're pushing less flow, which kind of by default means you're, you're introducing less pollutants. If you have less flow coming from development, then you have less pollutants getting there from that flow. Let's see. I think it must have hit something that made it to work.
Point back here towards me.
There we go. All right, so getting into, just, just trying to go real quick through what we actually changed. So, in eighteen point oh-three, point oh-four, zero is the, is the only section within the actual code, Title eighteen code that we changed. And this was because of a change that was made just within these negotiations. It just happened within the last few months. And what we had done, actually, when we came through this winter and updated it, the, the way that the, the permit read really pushed you towards doing maintenance agreements. If it was a private system on a, on a private, let's say, commercial site, then they really wanted us to sign agreements with them that they would take care of the, the maintenance of it, what that, what those maintenance responsibilities would be, how often they would need to do inspections, those kind of things. And now, they've changed it to simplify it to where we don't have to go and get them to sign something and then have that recorded with the county. We can just write that into ordinance. So, where, the section where we did have, that you had to have these maintenance agreements, I, I just changed it to, here's what you have to do. We can do it by ordinance, nobody has to sign anything. They don't have to go record it at the county. It makes it a lot easier. So, that was a, a good change. In terms of our drainage manual, there's two chapters that I updated. One was chapter three, which is our submittal requirements for, for drainage. And number one, just saying, at this point, because there's a, a long-term water quality aspect to what the state requires, you have to submit on it. And then, chapter eleven is our water quality chapter and that's the one where it has the bulk of the changes, where we implement, basically that, that our permit with the state says that for us to be able to discharge downstream, we have to implement regulations. And so, chapter eleven of our drainage manual is where we implement these regulations. So, our drainage manual is, is adopted by reference into code through Title eighteen. So, this is how we implement. So, we implement the state standard, we address what we already know, based off of what the state says. These are some potential items, potential things that can make it infeasible to infiltrate. We identify where, where those known places are, saying you'll have to, you know, you may have, either you may have to do more study or if it's our well-protection zone, we're saying you can't infiltrate, you can't capture runoff from a, from a parking lot and then infiltrate it into our well-protection zone. So, some of them are straight out, you can't, you can't infiltrate. But most of them are more, you need to, you need to really take a look at this to make sure that infiltration's gonna work. And then, the other thing that the, that the state, part, what, part of it is through the, the permit and part of it is through the manual. They suggest, they, they say that if you can't infiltrate, you need to look at alternative methods to treat the water before it starts downstream. But they don't, and they give some suggestive ways to do that, but they don't really put that into a, you have to do it this way. All we did is we took, I, we, I looked through other people's manuals, places like Oregon, Washington, back east, even some of our surrounding Mountain West states that have done it. And what the manual was suggesting is a, is a typical, a very typical way to do it. So, all we did is say, where they say, here's a, she's edge, she's edge is the way, I'm just saying in my manual, yep, this is the way you gotta do it. So, first off, if you can do full retention and infiltration, you gotta do full retention and infiltration. If you can't, but you could capture a part of it, then you capture a part of it and then you look for alternative methods to treat the rest. If you can retain or infiltrate anything onsite, then you have to go through the treatment, best management. best management practices. And then if you can't do it with anything that the, that the state require, there are in line, you know, once you're already within the storm drain system, there are proprietary devices that can clean it up. And so that would be your next step. And then if you can't do anything, which I think will be a very small amount, that can't treat it to any of those standards, they just default to what we call our pre-treatment standard, which is basically you have something in the, in the inlets or in a manhole to try to capture some before it discharges downstream. It's what our old standard was. If you can't meet any, the new standard in any way, at least you have to meet our old standard that we apply everywhere.
Are you almost over because we're out of time?
Uh, yeah. In fact, I kind of went over our overall strategy. But basically, we tried to take what the state was giving us and just say, this is what you've got to do. I didn't, you know, we're, we're doing some restrictions on what we'll allow within the city, the street right of way, just because of everything else that we've got to, all the other utilities that we've got to put in there. But for the most part, especially on, on properties, and when they're doing it on their own property, we just say, anything that the state will allow, will allow you to do. There's no reason for us to restrict it. So that was our overall strategy.
All right, thank you very much, Rob. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Presentation. We will move on now to item number seven, discussion regarding licensing of restaurants and brewery breweries. This will be with Hannah Salvo, our policy analyst, in about 20 minutes. Or 18 if you can make it.
I'll try to keep it very short. My part is brief, the rest is discussion for you, so.
Might we note for the visual oral record that Council Philmore?
Yeah, we thank Philmore for being here. And I don't know that I acknowledged that David Chippel had arrived a few minutes late, but he did, so. Glad to have everyone here.
Can I jump in right in? Staff has asked me about brew hub licensing, and that is for now just licensing specific to brew hubs. It has been tossed about the idea of addressing alcohol licensing comprehensively. And that is something we absolutely could do, but brew hubs are a little bit time sensitive right now. It's easier to focus in on rest of alcohol, and we address later if the council decides. We also, in this presentation, won't be discussing any policy options or having any policy decisions. All we're doing now is updating you on staff's progress and then looking to put together a committee that will hash out those policy details and bring back the recommendation for the council. The licensing sort of overview on the back of the handout that I gave you goes through the very basic steps that brew hub has to go through in order to get all of their necessary licensing from cities and states. I'll highlight these a couple of these, but this reference sheet, front and back, is probably going to be the work of the information. For brew hubs with the Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control, there are three options that brew hubs can license under. They can be a restaurant that serves beer only, a restaurant that's full service with a full bar, that's a scrap tank in Lehigh, also red brought in here at Provo, or a restaurant with limited service, that is wine beer, and heavy beer, which again, beer that's just heavier than 5% alcohol by volume. But throughout, if I say beer, I mean 5% or less, heavy beer is unique. In Provo, we've discussed this before, most closely aligned with our plans to be licensed for restaurants that serve alcohol. But there are some requirements that apply to all license types and both of those are included in the list of requirements for the city. Most of these, by the way, are not broken out because they are pretty common among all three. State requirements, there are different hours for different types. As we discussed, 70% sales from food, no drinks served from toxic patients, which mirrors Provo's own licensing requirements, drinks consumed on-site, patrons entering the restaurant. They also are not allowed to have any discounts on alcohol, no happy hour, no 10% off on weekends, whatever it is. Minors may not sit in the dispensing area, that is within 10 feet of the bar or five feet if there's even like a half wall or railing to some delineation that this is where the alcohol is sourced. And must be purchased in-state. They need a local consent form for any of the three DABC licensing types. They have to have a form signed by the mayor's office saying that they've gone through all of the necessary local requirements before they can even begin applying. There is also a $5,000 or $10,000 surety or cash bond, depending on which of the three licensing types. Yes?
Can I just throw out there, just because it's come up in a couple of different conversations, back to that local consent form, under state law, it's actually the governing body of the city that is,
Oh, is it?
that assigns that, but there is a Provo city ordinance that delegates that authority to the mayor. Just so you're aware of that.
Thanks for clarifying. They also have the alcoholic beverage control commission reviews floor plans, prototype menus with pricing, all of that before the licensing is issued. It's fairly comprehensive. They also must have a responsible alcohol service plan that is approved by the alcoholic beverage control commission, in addition to all the other requirements here. Provo's requirements, we have a few fewer. Unique to Class B, there's no dancing billiards or bowling on Class B premises. We could carry that over to any new brew hub Class F licensing. But it's just to keep, I think, restaurants separate from other entertainment venues, you know. More people could get hurt.
There's kids.
Again, background checks for applications, mandatory training for employees and managers, sanitation, certification from the health department, another cash bond with the city in addition to licensing and application fees and the state's bond. No alcohol slip from the drive-up window is my personal favorite. It applies to all of the licenses in the city. I don't know who added that, it's very fun. Employees can't drink on shift. The one unique one, that is not exclusively unique to Provo, but is more on the unique side, is that premises and booths all have to be brightly lit and visible from the main area. So there are no darker nooks, servers can always see what's happening at every table all the time.
How does our code define brightly lit?
This is all it says, must be brightly lit and visible from the serving area. So I'm not sure. That might be defined somewhere else in code, but it wasn't referenced at this point.
It's not defined anywhere else. It's just one of those.
Common sense.
I know brightly lit when I see it.
This, I believe, was to all, but I need to double check that. But I'm fairly certain it was for all.
I hear talk about dealing with it in the general sense. Are they complying with this?
This was listed in the third brew hub report that I did, so I can easily go back and find the reference in code for that.
Well, that's why I was asking if there's an inquiry also applied to that.
If you'd like, I can call up with you and send you an email with that answer.
And are we, this came up in our discussion, but the 60% sales from food, is that just an anomalous lack of update?
It was the old standard.
But it's not, it's out of compliance.
We also define beer by 4%, not 5%. Yeah, so we just haven't updated in a while, but ordinances are drafted whenever the council chooses to address those.
Presumably, our current restaurants that are, that are, they're held to the 70% standard right now.
Yeah, whichever is more strict.
State law covers that, and so if we're complying with state law, I'm complying with that.
Yep. That is the essential information from staff. Are there any questions before we talk about the committee formation?
My question is, how many, how much are we going to change our ordinances around alcohol in the next few months? Are we, I mean, does that make sense?
That's up to the council.
Are we just going to create like a licensing structure and, you know, some definitions for brew hubs? Or are we going to go through our entire code?
So that's what I mentioned. I, it's been discussed a little bit, but for now, staff would recommend addressing just brew hub licensing because it's a little time sensitive. And then if the council chooses to later comprehensively review alcohol policy, that'd be fine.
And there may be a couple of items like that, 60%, if we address it the same way.
But we need to keep a tight scope so that this gets done.
Otherwise, you could take a long time to do it.
Yeah.
So, and I think that's part of what the discussion here is for. My preference actually would be to take kind of a comprehensive look. I don't, I think it's been a while since we've done it. I think now is a good opportunity to take a, to take a look at our city policy generally regarding alcohol licenses and, and address it somewhat holistically while we're addressing it. And I still think, I think with discipline, I still think we can address it in a month, month and a half.
That was my preference as well, just to give.
Yeah, I would say, so as well, just to keep one example, I mean, in the course of my conversations, you know, concerns about alcohol consumption downtown and public safety. And it was pointed out to me that the liquor store sells half-mile liquor bottles, which only really have one purpose, and that's downtown. And so if we're kind of going after a licensing thing that's intended to be motivated by safety and public health, and yet we're ignoring something like that, we may be going after the wrong approach or not completely showing integrity, I guess, in the way we're going after it, so.
About half of the alcohol licenses of the 64, I don't know if you saw the email I sent this day, but about half are from grocery and convenience stores, and they're the main source of alcohol in Provo, yeah.
I think one point we should, we should consider when we look at the timeline is to experience with the public because this has been such an hot issue, the more we speed it up, the more I think people will push back on the fact that we are not interested in our public.
What do you imply would need to be different than what we're, what we're, other process we'd be going through?
I just don't think we should overhaul all of our alcohol ordinances right now. Six weeks, because I think that there would be pushback. Saying that we rushed it, we did, we closed doors, et cetera. But if we focus on licensing right now and take care of that because there's an immediate need, and then move on to more alcohol laws, that would make more sense, and I think the public would be more. I think the public would be more.
Any other thoughts on that question?
I think our brew hub ordinance, our license ordinance, that would be consistent with our current alcohol ordinance. And I think you can't see the other one without the other. I mean, you know, it would all be consistent and holistic in our approach. If we, if that, if I can't do it, that's worth it.
What is the time requirement? I would say we're looking at a holistic way and taking the time to do a really good job.
Do you have a sense of that, Brian? Is there? Well, I mean, part of, part of this, of course, is the status of the referendum, right? If the referendum gets the signatures and it's on the ballot, then, then there's no sunrise clause that operates, right? Or, or at least it doesn't until January 1st or something, right?
Right, I mean, arguably, in many ways, the referendum is irrelevant to the licensing question. The only, the only relevance is that if it gets put on, if that ordinance gets put on the ballot and gets frozen, then passing the license ordinance won't cause the brew hub land use to go into effect and just continue to be frozen. But there's no reason that you can't pass the brew hub licensing while it's frozen because they're independent and they have each other.
Which is for part of the public's information.
Right.
At what point could the licensing ordinance be a referendum?
It'd be subject to referendum, just like any other city ordinance. The main difference being that the, there's some differences in the signature thresholds because it's not a land use ordinance. So that's, I mean, I guess that's one thing for you to consider is, as far as timing goes, depending on when you pass the licensing regulations, there is a possibility that then you have two referendums.
Well, I think, I would just, speaking for myself, agree that I don't, I don't want anyone to have the perception that there's anything, I mean, there's no closed door. This is open, this meeting itself is open. So I don't, I don't, I don't want to create any impression that there's a rush for a process that doesn't provide adequate public input. I guess I was just feeling the sense that in the process of examining what might be a licensing restriction on a brew hub, we might want to reassure the public that we are looking at larger questions of public safety and the health that contains the alcohol licensing. Because if we're only, and maybe, maybe it happens at stages, I don't know, or maybe the committee, the subcommittee that works on this says, this is a much bigger problem than, than we think can be handled in the short term, but we think we're ready to have brew hub license restrictions set forward. And I suppose we can just cross that bridge and get to it. I don't, I don't think we have to have a mandate unless others feel differently, but both of them are settled at the same time. I just, I just think it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to go after just the questions as about the brew hub as it pertains to the public safety and health when there are probably some other bigger targets that we have to be thinking about.
I would suggest in, in context of the council decision that is being referended, but also in the interest of having some resolution, my suggestion to you as a council is to have, have a committee comprised of people from both sides of the, of the, you know, favor and opposed, but also maybe say a three-month timeframe so that you can get these questions settled before the referenda actually happens. Lou, Ben, Delaine, and Kiel.
Part of the problem that we could run into is that our subcommittees are not open to the public. And that doesn't feel like a very transparent process for the public. Additionally, whoever we appoint to a three-person ad hoc committee could become in some way kind of politicized, right? Are we going to have two people who oppose it and one person who is in favor of it? Or two people who are in favor of it and one person who's opposed to it?
I would recommend the latter, since that's, that's a little more reflective of the both, yeah.
I think, I think the thing to do is even if you have a committee working on it, we've had committees work on things before, and you've brought in, like the DAPR committee came and brought in experts and brought in people in various businesses around development. I think you could do the same thing and come up with recommendations. And then when it's presented to the council, you have an open process of review and public input, et cetera, et cetera, to get that information. So you have that. And then as you're working forward, I assure you, Janelle Pogmeyer will probably write an article about the committee and its work. And anybody that wants to have some input, you know, might be something that you'd be open to, representing different interests or stakeholders, and then have the more public input as part of your broader process happen.
Okay, I was wrong. You do have, well, you do have a timeframe. Something, you know, in a sense, something Cliff just said triggered this memory. For whatever reason, the state legislature has imposed different rules for when a referendum election takes place based on whether it's a land use law or not. So if it's a land use law and the clerk determines before August 30th that the petitions are sufficient, it goes on the election that year, okay? If it's not a land use law and the legislative action was taken after April 15th, it doesn't go on the ballot until the following year. So if there were to be a referendum on licensing and the licensing were passed after April 15th, the referendum on that issue would take place in 2021. Okay.
There's another public interest, there is issue on both sides. It might make sense to do this as a committee of the whole.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion, just so we can focus the discussion. So I recommend that we create a committee to look at, beer license committee. That we have three members, two of whom voted in favor of the licensing change or the land use change, I should say, and one that voted against it. And I propose a mission statement to review current city policy regarding beer licenses and study best practices.
You've slowed that way down.
I hand this to you and send it under unit. And options for regulation, recommend city policy and regulations for beer licenses to be handled and to make a recommendation or an update by the 21st of April.
Wait for a second, but I, my suggestion to you is that if, if April 15th is the deadline, that if you don't have a decision on the brew hub licensing by the 15th, you're effectively allowing a referendum to delay this and have this issue. you're effectively allowing a referendum to delay this and have this issue before the council for the next two years.
So I'm with Mr. Stuhl, maybe after we get a second, we can do a substitute motion, but I'd like to see this transpire with a, with a council.
The only disadvantage to that is that we can't invite some of the people of different constituencies that you were talking about, or that, not you were talking about, that was talked about to address the issue that you're concerned about, is, will, will there be input from different constituencies in the city? So if you have a subcommittee, you have the advantage of creating an ad hoc committee that includes people from the community.
I think a work meeting, though, is more transparent to the public than inviting certain people to an ad hoc committee at, you know, on a public sized time and on a recorded way.
I think that, I think that we have a very public process in passing, doing these things. And so I think by selecting a, a subcommittee to really focus on this, that we meet once a week or whatever, and, and I'm hoping quickly, you know, in a matter of two to three weeks, we could have recommendations, and then those recommendations get discussed, you know, work meeting, case. And, and we can make it a very public conversation. But I, I think to get a first draft proposal on the table for the whole council to, to tear apart, you know, very publicly, and here, and like, all the constituencies and whatnot, I, I think there's value in just getting that first proposal quickly.
I agree with that.
There may be a middle ground, we can have committees that have one to three people, so if you open it up, so that any interest of council members can attend, and I would notice that.
Stop, I think, does any of the meetings, the transparency, we also take, if we're on this?
I think the, the big dis, I, I like this middle ground for me. I think the big disadvantage of doing it from the beginning all the way through, just as this council, is that we're going to move very, very slowly. You know, because it, these are discussions that can take an hour at a time, and our ability to pack that into our work meeting agenda is very limited. So I think if we, I would, I would second the motion and, and look at possible ways to, you know, publicly notice those meetings and, and maybe help solve that problem. There, two hands down here, and then.
My, my suggestion to you is, from a staff perspective, we could, assuming the committee could, could meet enough, we could have a recommendation come back to the full council at the work meeting on the 31st. Gives us about two, two, two weekends in between to at least come back and identify what, you know, what are the issues, and what needs to be changed, and then bring it back to the council in, in just a matter of three weeks. And then the full council can then deal with it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and again, this is entirely up to the council and whatever they feel like the right process for this, or even what the intent for the process is, but you may want to just consider or think about the fact that it has often been the case in the past that, in this kind of situation, that part of the purpose of the subcommittee is to hold brainstorming sessions where frank and open discussions can be had about whether possible ideas for a regulation are even permissible or not. It's very hard to have those conversations in the public eye.
So we do have a time constraint, is my understanding?
It's not an absolute time constraint, but it's a, it, there is a, there is a consequence to missing April 15th, which is that then, if you, if you take action by April 15th, and the public were to challenge that ordinance by referendum, then both, and both items, or whichever of the two got, that met the signature threshold, could have, could be voted on this year. If action's taken after April 15th, you could end up having a referendum election this year and a referendum election next year. And while I'm saying that, let me throw out that this may be actually something for you to consider about. I understand all the comments made before about doing comprehensive review of the licensing regulations, but even if you do the review as a comprehensive thing, you may want to pass two separate ordinances, one of which does nothing but create the brew pub license, so that if there's a referendum on it, that's the only thing being frozen and challenged, instead of the entire situation.
Good point.
Along those lines, that's why I think we could be more efficient, if we just looked at the brew pub ordinance right now, and then after we're done in April 15, then we would be in higher alcohol.
I'm revising my earlier opinion of how I think that would be. No, I'm not removing my second, I'm just, I'm just, in fact, Dave's wording is just talking about beer licensing, and I think that's, that's what this committee ought to work on, that's my feeling.
It's not beer licensing, it's, it's the brew pub issue of licensing.
Your motion said beer licenses, yes.
Yes, which, which I would intentionally meaning broadly, like the B license. I, you think, don't call it A license and B licenses, you're like, aren't they all considered beer licenses?
Yes.
Or only B?
All of them are considered beer licenses.
These just rest.
If, if I may add, I'd like to revise my, my motion. So, the, the timeline is to make the recommendation by the 31st of March, and that would then give us then the, the two additional weeks before the 14th of April, which is when our meeting is. I, I think there's a lot of value in, in what Mr. Jones suggested, as far as, you know, being able to, to speak frankly about, you know, whatever, or even options kind of thing. We still have the, to discuss it all fully in public and whatnot. I also think, though, that any licensing action that we take, depending on what that licensing, what that action is, and maybe even, you know, it, it could be referred, or, I don't know what terminology here, it could be referred, it could be.
The referendum, the referendum?
Yeah.
The subject to referendum.
Subject to a referendum request by, by different groups in the city. And so I think if, if you split it, you might get, you might eat. I, I think, I, I'm hoping that the outcome of this committee would be a recommendation that the, the council could get behind, and that the whole community could get behind. I think by doing it as a package, you can find a compromise that serves everyone well. I think if, if we narrowly do it one way or another, I think there's, there's people on, on both sides, they could attack it, and, and so I'm not certain, yeah, I, I, I think that there's value in doing it as a package, so.
Yeah, I would like to echo that. We, Council Harding and I were talking about this the other day. There's a segment of our community that feels like what the brew pub would do is essentially increase alcohol consumption, sales and consumption. If, if we're looking at the overall package of licensing, there may be some things you can do, limits on number of licenses by population or something, that might tilt that back down, mitigate that, or maybe even tilt it below where we're turning right now. And if we could find some kind of compromise that appealed to both segments of the community, that, that could really come out of value. I don't know if it's possible, but it seems like it's worth attempting.
It's not impossible to find a new time limit, but I think it has a long period.
We're 15 minutes over, yes, I understand.
And I'm trying to help, from my perspective, I'm trying to help council with the decision that it made, and, and protect that, that decision, right? And, and so that's where I'm coming from, because I think the broader questions matter. The thing, one thing to remember is that if, let's say we did a comprehensive ordinance, and we turned it, and it went to referendum, and it, and the voters turned it down, we'd still be left with the existing licensing regime that we've got, right? And so nothing, all you would do is any change, a referendum would, would, would defeat the proposed new law. And so you'd still be, you wouldn't be eliminating beer from provo, you'd still have the existing licensing laws. That's just something to remember.
All right, so we have a motion, and the motion is to create a committee with two who are from the, who voted in favor, and, and one who voted against, with the mission statement that Mr. Harding read into the record. Do we have any further discussion on that motion?
Does this, sorry, does this mission statement define the scope of what we want to accomplish in the next three weeks? Four weeks? We're going to overhaul our entire alcohol ordinance?
No, beer, beer.
Our beer ordinance, or our brew pub ordinance?
Beer licenses. So. Sorry, so, I'm just trying to understand, because a restaurant can cert, I mean, if, if they were, if a brew pub came in and didn't decide, and they didn't prove it onsite, they could still be just under a Class B restaurant license, serve beer, serve, serve other kinds of liquor. I guess the question is, is, when you're talking about beer overall, you're talking, just, you're talking about, trying to figure out how, how to define this, because you're not necessarily creating a license just for beer, you'd be creating a license for brew pubs versus just having them operate underneath the, the B licensing, that would have some nuances to it, is what I'm understanding.
This, this is what I'm hearing, is, is the possibility of this committee looking at beer, whether it's in a grocery store, at a restaurant, or that they can, restaurants that can sell beer that they bring in, or that they can brew onsite and sell. With an eye that beer licensing and looking at things under all of those beer licenses, how we deal with those, we might come up with ways that could reduce the overall consumption, or regulate that in a, in a better manner, without addressing everything in our licensing dealing with alcohol. Is, is that what I'm, you know?
And the same committee could do all of that, they don't have to do it all at the same time. They can do, the committee can exist and do things piecemeal, and have a proposal before April 15th for one part of the entire project, and then finish the project after April.
And so in my mind, I could see a, a possible scenario is there might be a creation of a License J, or whatever it is, that's for a restaurant that wants to brew alcohol and sell it onsite, and then could be working on other aspects of it. But if that ordinance scheme, Brian's got me in a bad habit of saying scheme, if that ordinance framework is acceptable, that could come to the council, and then dealing with other alcohol issues could come later, and come in serially as we do it. And then that way, the direct issue of a brew pub, if it's done by April 15th, then it would be on this year's election, if that were referred to the people for a vote.
My understanding is we have A licenses, B licenses, C licenses, E, and E, all of them. Okay, and so, and so theoretically, if you added a new class, it would be a Class F.
Yeah.
My, my, what I meant by calling it beer license, I had heard, I thought, when I heard beer licenses or beer license classes, I thought, like, A through E were all considered beer licenses. And so what I was talking about is, it doesn't say overhaul, it just says, review what currently is, study best practices and options, and then come forward with a recommendation. And so, and that's what I meant, and if I need to change beer license or whatever, I meant, look at A through E, how do we do it, how do all the communities do it, come back with a recommendation.
I just think it's too much to try to bite off and chew at these, I think, subjects.
I just want to address something that Mr. Rickens said. I think there was an assumption that there's this underlying assumption that we're trying to limit alcohol in our community, but that's not something that the community or the council has ever voted on specifically. So when we create these committees or these ordinances, I think that's a dangerous assumption.
Well, it's not stated in the mission of the committee, but it certainly was expressed as a concern in, in, by the community and among the council during the vote, so I don't see why that's an unfair consideration for the committee to be looking at any more than the other considerations in favor of the brew pub that we've brought up.
I think it could be a consideration, I just don't think that's the intent or motive of that.
Probably framed as increasing public safety surrounding drinking establishments.
Okay, so can I just pause for just one second? We're way over time, and, but this is pretty important. What's our schedule with the rest, can we?
So, Mr. Walter has said that, I just talked to him, he's quite favorable, he's, he's willing to just defer his till tonight, because it's all public hearing anyway, so his, his is scheduled for 30 minutes, his two items.
Okay.
So we could, we could lose that right now, and pick it up tonight.
All right, anyway, I just wanted, we can continue the discussion here, or, does anybody else?
Yes, sorry, I went out of turn before. I, I think it's, it's just too much to take on. I appreciate your desire, I just worry about us being able to just accomplish anything, because we're trying to accomplish so much, that it was just really narrowing the scope, focusing on one specific thing. Now what that is, I don't know, but, you know, really focusing in. I, I don't, I, I don't want to, you know, say this isn't about.
You know, valid, uh, valid thing to try to do, I just worry about trying to do too much in too little time. Bill?
Well, with all due respect to, to that comment, I, I don't, I don't hear a, I don't sense a consensus that we're trying to rush everything by the end of this month. What I hear is saying, from various people, is that we want to set up an ad hoc committee, three people, all the council, who will take a hard look at the entire alcohol regime, particularly focus on brew pub issue, to make sure that we get work in our review vote within the time frame. But that they should do it holistically, they should, they should do it in the context of the entire alcohol regime, and if, you know, it would be maybe a minor miracle to pull it off, to have an ordinance to address the entire alcohol regime. At the same time, I don't think that's likely to happen. But they need to view the brew pub ordinance within that context, and get us a brew pub ordinance in time, so they can continue on to address the larger issues.
And I, I would only add that if, if the committee just doesn't feel like, you know, they have enough time or they have enough information to even make the more limited recommendation about the brew pubs before the April 15 deadline, then so be it. I mean, I don't, I think, I, I sense we're all in agreement, we don't want to rush anything unduly, but I think, at least for me, I'm comfortable with the subcommittee taking a shot at meeting quickly in the next two to three weeks, to see what we come up with as, as some parameters for us to consider. And we, and if, and again, if the council and the majority feels that we're, we're not ready to pass anything, then we're not ready to pass it.
I agree with that general sentiment. My hope would be that we could get the brew pub ordinance in place, so that when people vote on the referendum, they've got the total package to look at, they see our context.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. But that doesn't necessarily, I mean, the only, the April 15 deadline doesn't, is only pertaining to the possibility of our licensing being referended, right?
Right.
But otherwise, if we pass something, say, in May or June, it still is in advance of the November vote. So people would know, right?
Right, they would have that. I suppose you could pass an ordinance that's conditioned on the outcome of the referendum. Another sunrise clause type of motion.
It would be similar to, the state legislature can do that, a few things to share with, and ones that we're actually contingent upon how we come up with cases.
That could be something for the committee to discuss if we're pressed for time.
All right.
This is just too much fun, Mr. Chairman.
All that said, I think you could go ahead, and if you're ready, you could vote on it, and then, and then if it passes, then select your three members. Okay. Any other discussion of the motion?
Just a second on the revised.
I did, I seconded.
Oh, you did.
Oh, on the revised.
The revised motion which moved the timeline.
So any further discussion of that?
Can I just, can we review what that motion said?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, Dave Harding moved to recommend creating a committee to look at beer licensing, composed of three members, two of whom voted in favor of the land use change, one of whom voted against it, with the mission statement to review current city policy regarding beer licenses, study best practices and options for regulation, recommend city policy and regulations for beer licenses to the council, and to make a recommendation on update by the 31st of March.
I would like to change that to alcohol, generally, in terms of their, their larger charter, but to focus on the brew pub license in particular, immediately.
Just one last comment, I hope we don't get too worried about the April 15 deadline. We're seven people, we're going to give it our best shot, and if for some reason the public feels like they want to weigh in on it, I don't think we should ever do that. I really liked the way the mayor talked about it in the block, it was just a part of our work on the ground now.
Yes, thank you for that, let me get some clarification, I apologize, I had in my mind that if we pass something after the 15th, that if someone petitioned for a referendum, that that meant automatically it had to be voted, well, it would be delayed that year and a half, but it would only be delayed that year and a half if the signatures were collected and verified.
Correct.
And is it, is it the same number of signatures or is it a lesser amount? If it wasn't half as many, I mean, I feel pretty comfortable, you know, I wouldn't worry as much on the 15th. I would, I would feel bad if, you know, this has got so much attention, if a, if a fairly small minority of the community was able to hold the whole thing up for a year and a half because we got licensing done after the 15th.
My concern a lot with that is just that because it has been a heated and divisive issue, I'd like to find some quick consensus if possible and not track out contentious issues.
Can I just throw in one more strategy thing that I think would actually help answer your question?
Okay, can I respond?
Sure.
Just really, really quick, because that is the precise reason why I would like to do this all together, rather than closing the divisive issue and then bringing it back up in a few months later from a different aspect, I think getting the closure all together is, for me.
But it's not our current alcohol laws that are like on the table.
Let me put it this way, my vote last few weeks ago was contingent on the idea that we were going to be looking at licenses and my vote might change if that was not the case. Sorry, sorry.
Brian?
I was going to say, no, I lost my framework, sorry, I had, well, you may want to think, there's some timing issues here to think about, right, if you can get it done by the April 15th, then, then you're guaranteed that if there is one, it's in the same, same election. What you may want to think about is if you don't get it done by the 15th, then you may want to wait until after the deadline for signatures is over. Because if enough signatures have been gathered, then you already know that there's going to be election, in which case then you might decide you want to wait until after the election to find out what the answer is, and if there aren't enough signatures, then you might decide to go ahead and move forward, but then you will have the issue that that could take a year and a half at that point. Probably things for the committee to think about.
Bill, are you making a substitute motion or?
I was, I was going to substitute alcohol for beer.
Well, let me just throw in there that Mr. Harding is correct that all of our licenses right now are about, in fact, all of the, all of the city regulations right now about alcohol are really just about beer. We don't have any non-bear licenses.
So it covers.
Right, so if you're saying that you want to think about adding some, that's great, but all regulations that currently exist are only about beer.
Well, help me understand that, because restaurants serve more than beer.
It's just licensed by the state.
Yes, but we don't have any regulations that are specific to what else they sell.
We have the power to do that, right?
I believe so, yes, I don't know any.
I don't think the state preempts it.
Right, right.
All I'm suggesting is let's look at the whole picture, that's all.
That was my.
There's no harm, it'll all come back to the council.
I'm curious what Mr. Chisholm has.
I don't have any opinions on that.
That's not true.
You're going to what happened.
I'm indeed curious.
Don't worry, this is going to go too long. No, I am anxious to get something for the brew pub ordinance to move forward, so, and I think it, I think it needs to be addressed in the context of all the beer licensing, but I, but I, but again, we voted on this, we're trying to move something forward. It was dependent on us doing licensing for a brew pub, and I think that needs to be looked at right away, and I think we need to try to do that as fast as possible. Having said that, I don't mind, you know, if we have a committee that looks at all, you know, beer licensing and alcohol licensing, I think that's great. I just, I just don't know, again, back to Travis's point, I don't know that we're realistic about trying to fight that off in the next three weeks, and I think, you know, after, after what we just went through as a, as a, as a council, I think it would be, I just think it's important to move forward on this part of it as fast as we can.
All right, we really have used up the 30 minutes, so, so we, let's vote if there's no further.
Is there a second to council film or a substitute?
I'm sorry.
Substitute alcohol.
I'll, I'll second the substitute to change out beer to alcohol.
Okay, and the idea with this, just to clarify, is that, is that within the next three weeks, we're trying to come up with some suggestions, specific suggestions that would have to do with brew pub ordinance in addition to alcohol consumption and licensing in general.
Do we regulate the licensing brew pub first?
Right.
With an eye to addressing it comprehensively.
Recommend city policy and regulation for alcohol licenses to the council.
Just want to make sure we have an idea of something we could vote on in three weeks, as opposed to.
Dave, since you were the original mover, if you're willing to just amend your own motion, then we only need one vote, two votes.
Okay, I'm happy.
Assuming that, you were also second.
I'm happy to amend my motion as suggested.
So now we just need one vote on the motion.
Are we ready to vote on the motion?
Oh, yes.
So the amended.
Last amended motion was quite a second of the act.
Stayed at Elizabeth, I just wanted to see if this is the real one we're voting on, you're voting on, I just want to hear what it is.
Okay, so the motion is, um, Council Harding moves to recommend creating a committee to look at alcohol licensing, the committee composed of three members, two of whom voted in favor of the land use change, one of whom voted against it, with the mission statement to review current city policy regarding alcohol licenses, study best practices and options for regulation, to recommend city policy and regulations for alcohol licenses to the council, and to make our recommendation on update by the 31st of March.
Okay, all in favor? I appear to be unanimous, is that right?
All right, so we do, do we, we have time to do this, but we have to create the committee. I'm afraid this is going to drag on unduly long, so I'm hoping we can do this quickly. But the recommendation was to have two people who had voted in favor and one person who had voted against, I'm going to pull myself out of consideration for, for that just due to my other commitments, so I am not interested in serving on that subcommittee in just case that helps make eliminations, yes, Dave?
So I make a motion then that Dave Harding be the chair of the committee, Bill Fillmore as vice chair.
How do you recommend you?
I would be happy to do this, I'll, I'll back you up unofficially. So we need three, two in favor and one against, so Dave Harding was in favor, Bill Fillmore was against, and we would need, for this particular proposal, we would need one more who was in favor.
Right, so I'm just saying, if David wanted to serve on that subcommittee, because she's dug into it deeper than I have, I'd be happy to support you outside the committee.
So now, if I can follow the conversation, I think the motion is Dave Harding as chair and Dave Sewell as vice chair.
And we have a volunteer for, who's the third?
So, yeah, I typically would love to, but Vicky's do the 23rd, and I think that would just hinder progress.
I can do it unless, do you want it?
Okay, all right, does this require a motion? Okay, so that's the motion, is there a second to that motion, Mr. Fillmore? Any discussion? All in favor? Wow, look at you guys, that was amazing.
If a fourth member wanted to, wanted to come, they could, we just need a motion.
Right, okay, so we are now, so we are saying items number eight and nine, presented by David Walter, are going to be dealt with this evening, correct? Is that what we decided, so we'll now move on to item number 10, a discussion regarding Utah County Health Department's preparations for COVID-19, otherwise known as novel coronavirus. I didn't know novel was part of the plan.
Coronavirus is a family of viruses like SARS and things like that, so it's been viewed as.
This will be presented by Ralph Kleig.
Thank you for being here. Executive Director of the Utah County Health Department.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. It's good, good to be here to talk to you about this, I'll only just take a few minutes and then I'll leave time for questions, I'd rather get those questions answered than anything else, so. But just to give you a little bit of an update on the coronavirus, in the world wide, there's been over 100,000 cases, between 3,000 and 4,000 deaths, most of those, of course, are in China, but it has spread to other areas of the world in a significant manner as well. In the United States, there's been 423 confirmed cases and 19 deaths. In Utah, we have two confirmed cases, both of those coming in from people who've been traveling. So what do we know about coronavirus, as was mentioned, it's a novel virus, meaning it's a new virus. You know, coronavirus is usually what cause our common colds, but in more serious cases like SARS or MERS, they can be, be more serious than that, and the concern is we, they're trying to figure out where this COVID, which is coronavirus infectious disease, 19, the year it started, where that new strain is going to fit, fit in, because people are unlikely to have any immunity to it at this point, and of course, there's no, no vaccine for it either. It causes a respiratory illness very much like flu or severe, and it can be mild, like the flu can be mild, or it can be more severe and cause things like pneumonia. You know, it can be fever, cough, and shortness of breath, are the typical symptoms you'll see. You know, but those symptoms don't cause alarm for everybody, you know, you can have a cough and shortness of breath with asthma, you know, so even though a person has something like that, doesn't mean they necessarily have a coronavirus. Children and adolescents seem to be less likely to experience severe illness. The ones who are probably most concerned about at this point are those who are age 60 and older. Unfortunately, I fit in that category, so I guess I'm concerned about myself too. As well as those with medical conditions such as heart or lung problems, or diabetes, cancer, those types of underlying conditions. The virus spreads very similar, in a manner, very similar to flu, which is mostly from droplets that are in the air from somebody coughing or sneezing. There is, it's thought that there can, can be some spread from touching something that's contaminated and touching your eye or your mouth or your nose, but that's not, is not thought to be the main way it's spread. And usually, it's considered that those who are most at risk have been in close contact with an individual who has the disease, usually within six feet. You've probably heard a lot about that with the BYU basketball game in the news, so. But what can be done, well, you know, fortunately, in government, you usually have some generous sickly policies, so people can stay home when they're sick. For businesses, sometimes that's more of a challenge, get people to stay home when they're, when they're sick. A real question to consider and think about is if you have somebody, say, in a fire department chief that comes down and is confirmed case, and in that close contact area, the rest of the fire department may, that was there, may have to be quarantined, then, then what do you do? What are your sick policies for those who may have to be quarantined in that kind of a case? The technical term for the person who has the disease is that they're isolated. Quarantine applies to those who may have been exposed, so when you quarantine somebody, you're trying to see if the symptoms develop, and if they don't, then they come out of quarantine, if they do, then they become isolated under, under official way. What's the health department doing well? I can tell you I'm doing very little else right now than, than working on this. You know, we've had meetings with the county commissioners to prepare, we've had meetings with the emergency managers in the county to prepare, we've got a couple of meetings a week with the state health department, trying to prepare and make sure we're, we're trying to get a message out that's uniform throughout the state, and in the way we approach mass gatherings or schools and things like that, and so we're, we're working to do that. We're happy to keep you updated any way we can, the news seems to get out as quick as anything. Social media is probably faster than the rest of us, so. What kind of questions do you have that I can, I can answer for you?
Where are you at with respect to testing kits?
The testing kits? Well, you know, most, most doctor's offices should have the testing kits now.
Adequate numbers?
Adequate numbers for, if they meet the conditions for testing. Now, adequate numbers for, if everybody wants to go in and get tested, no. But adequate numbers, I think, for those who meet the conditions for testing, which is usually means you have to have exposure to a known individual, or you have to have traveled in certain areas and come back.
Who decides whether a certain group needs to be quarantined or isolated?
Well, if it's a group that's been traveling outside the United States.
Bill, what I mean is, I mean, worst case scenario is the fire department, so what if you had?
Well, that would be probably in the case of probable fire department, that would be our, the health department, Utah County Health Department.
If I could, we, we are under the understanding that as long as we're taking proper precautions, as long as we're taking care of our body substance isolation, if we came upon somebody and we had, we would not be required to be quarantined. The firefighters that they have quarantined up in Seattle, they bumped into this without really understanding, it was kind of early on, and, and none of them took proper, or I shouldn't say proper, but more detailed precautions, exposure precautions, so we are, we are approaching this from a, from a different standpoint, general sickness now gets a different level of body substance isolation than they would have a month ago.
Does the fire department do your EMT service or?
Yes, yeah, we are paramedics.
And there's been discussions going on at the state level that, that they, they would make the EMTs aware of homes where there is someone who's isolated, meaning they have the disease, so that if they had to respond to something there, they could have that flagged and they would know to go in with protective equipment, so hopefully that'll take place, so.
Do you have that protective equipment?
We do. We, we have, we have the proper stuff in abundance, as of right now. And again, we're not wearing it to every medical call, we're wearing it to these, these fever, the general sickness, the general sick, this comes in as kind of a general sickness, not feeling well, fever, that kind of stuff, anything that's even questionable, our people are taking a different set of precautions to.
A proactive approach is a good way of approaching this.
Yeah, now Ralph, do you have any sense of the adequacy of the supplies in our alcohol hospitals?
Well, I, I think, you know, it depends on how the outbreak goes, you know. Certainly, the hospitals are prepared well to handle things, but if it gets to where it becomes pandemic or, you know, so widely spread in our community, supplies could dwindle quickly.
It's uncomfortable at this point?
Oh, yeah, very comfortable, the hospitals were all prepared, they, they know what to do.
Does the county have the resources to manage this outbreak if something were to seriously affect Utah County?
Well, I guess it depends on what kind of resources you mean. Do we have enough epidemiologists to deal with it? Probably not, we'll do the best we can, we can pull in nurses from our schools or wherever we need to, if we have to, and we'll expand our, our response however we can. Now, if half of our community's become infected, we would have some very difficult, very difficult time. But we still do the best we can, so.
Yeah, I just have some concerns since the county has slashed their budget if we are adequately prepared.
Would I like to have more money, yes, I'd like to have more money, but I'll bet every one of your department heads would come in and say the same thing.
They have. They have.
Yeah, I'm willing to bet. But, and so you do the best you can with what you have. But, you know, we have some great staff, great epidemiologists. We have the state health department we can call on as well. Now, again, if it's every community in the state, their resources are limited too.
Does the school have a plan for this?
Oh, yes, yeah. Yeah, we have plans for pandemic and infections, you know, communal infections.
We very much appreciate you coming and sharing that with us, and we hope that, and I assume you'll let us know as soon as we need to take any extra precautions as the city will allow them to do to...
Yeah, the state, we're working with the state on some what's called NPI, or non-pharmaceutical interventions. And when we get that guideline finalized, we'll send that out. We want to send that out to the city so they have it, and then if it can use and help it. I mean, most of that is, you know, if you're sick, stay home, you know, practice good personal hygiene.
Yeah.
But there, you know, that doesn't summarize the four pages it might be, but that's some of the key points.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. All right, thank you. We'll move to item number 11. This is Public Works Department request, general plan amendment for adoption of the 2020 presentation master plan. It's a citywide application. This is Robert Mills, the planner, or rest aside. This obviously will be discussed this evening.
Settle in, everybody. Enjoy. So I'll just basically introduce it. We do have several representatives from Public Works, as well as Vern Kiesler, the planner, who is the consultant on this project. But basically, the transportation master plan is required to be updated every five years. This is the 2019 slash 2020 update. A lot of different parts of this plan that I'm sure many of you have heard about or will hear about this evening. There are a lot of different redesignations of different roads, different elements of the plan. A new addition to this plan includes active transportation. So Chapter 5 actually covers that pretty well. But I'm happy to answer any questions, and again, Public Works and Vern are here as well to answer any questions and that.
Maybe just a couple of things on process. Council's email's been blowing up, and just the ones I've been getting have seemed like they've been at least one an hour for the last four days. A lot of them are pushing back on the 820 North. And so one of the options, one of the council's options with regard to this plan, can they eliminate something? Can they send it back through formal revisions? What can you see as the options to adopt from the council?
Well, it is going to be adopted as part of the general plan, and so if the council doesn't feel comfortable with a certain section of it, then absolutely, you're welcome to make that recommendation, and you don't have to adopt it. But I will turn the time over to Shane to give a better answer to that question.
Robert, is there any immediacy with respect to tonight's meeting? Do we have time to reconsider and make more thoughts or any kind of pressure?
This has been ongoing for quite a while. Having said that, this is a very, very important part of the future planning for our city. So I think it deserves a great deal of deference and a great deal of examination. If there are things that you don't understand, if there are things that you want to hear more about, that's a good move.
Are there financial considerations? Meaning, we have a consultant retained, I believe, a consultant.
Yeah, so let me give you, let me give you an update.
Shane might have some different opinions.
Well, before you do, however, are you going to make a presentation tonight recommending it in its current form?
I'm going to make a recommendation based on the Public Works Department's desire that this be recommended for.
So Mayor, Council, so I'll give you, since we have some new council members, maybe I'll give you, Vern and I just kind of sat there, kind of give you the process, some of the history of where we're at. So we've been working on this master plan for two years now. We acquired Parametrics, Vern and his team, again, to start working on this in 2018.
December.
December of 2018. This plan is a complete, more than a revision, it's a complete rewrite. It was 100, it's 153 pages that was completely redone. We have 33 changes to the major and local streets plan. We have new revised cross-sections that we have worked with, with city council, with planning commission, with TMAC. We've also included the adoption of the IFA, so the impact fee analysis, and the IFP, the impact fee facilities plan, that has adopted, I guess, a portion of this document, which is the capital facilities plan, which is tied to the IFA and IFP. We've had nine TMAC meetings. We've had extensive meetings with them to work through a lot of these public concerns, a lot of their concerns, those neighborhoods that had concerns about specific corridor being 2230 North, 820 North. We've had three open houses. At our last city council meeting that we held, it was, again, it was recommended, we'd had two, but it was recommended that we hold a third as a follow-up, which we did about a week and a half ago, was our third open house to the public to gain, to present this, them, this final draft document. We've had five planning commissions, specific planning commissions meeting. We've had, as part of this, as Robert mentioned, that is new, we had discussions with city council about the complete streets policy, and inclusion of a complete streets policy as part of this plan. And so what was taken from that is to get more broad, more higher level, more general, as Robert mentioned, we, which is completely new, is we have an active transportation plan, which includes bicycles, pedestrians. So you'll see, you've seen that plan, it's quite extensive in there, and we spent quite a bit of time on that. And then we've also had, this will, we've had three city council meetings, this will be the fourth. So that's kind of where we stand. We've spent a lot of time and effort this. I know Parametrics, Vern and his team have done a great job to this point to try to address all those issues, I think, that are, maybe want to be discussed here. So I will go ahead and turn the time over to Vern, try to see if we can address some of those additional, I think my understanding would be those corridor concerns that's probably, I think, are still coming, specifically probably 820 North. So I'll turn the time over to Vern.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Tepucy, and members of the city council. Just wanted to let you know that the city council has adopted a couple of segments of the transportation master plan already. You adopt it by resolution, still the case, right, Gary? We don't adopt it by ordinance, we adopt it by resolution. That gives you the ability to have a little flexibility in the general plan. It's not ordinance like your city code. This is your capital facilities plan. This has already been adopted. It was adopted as part of the impact fee facilities plan. That impact fee facilities plan was part of a beginning part of the general plan, and that helped to determine your transportation impact fee that you charge for new development as they come into Provo City. Another thing that's already been adopted is your new cross-sections. You have adopted six new cross-sections. Now, I say that you, I mean the city council, and we understand that there's four new members of the city council. So that's been adopted. We have had three public open houses in which they were very well attended, over 100 each time. Some controversial issues occurred with 2230 North and 820 North. 820 North is one of those projects that's been on the plan at least since, well, segments of the plan has been on around since 2001, especially between University Avenue and 500 West. Other segments of the plan have been on in the 2014 update. 2230 North, for instance, has been on the plan since 1990. So we modified this to say capacity and safety improvements, instead of just widening to five lanes. Corridor study needs to be done. Transportation master plan is usually a 30,000-foot level. That needs to be on-the-ground corridor study in the future before a determination is made there. So I know you have questions, and I have my senior engineer, even though he doesn't look senior, my senior engineer is here to help answer some questions. I'm a planner by trade, and we're happy to answer any questions related to the entire transportation master plan, including what the planning commission recommended. There are some modifications the planning commission recommended. We have included those in the new update. The only thing the planning commission did not see, and we received this past week from the fire department, was the hazardous materials routing map. And that has been since implemented in this. If you received it, it's on page 72, but it looks like this. It's just a map that shows where they prefer their hazardous materials to be routed, instead of through the neighborhoods. So that's kind of a two-year quick summary. I have a 30-minute presentation, if you wanted to see it, in relationship to your major and local streets plan. Every time I come here, you're dealing with controversial issues. Last time I was here, it's the medical school and the golf course. Today, it's the alcohol ordinance. So I want to save you some time, but I want to be thorough in answering any questions you may have.
Let me just say, just by way of protocol, we do, of course, have most of, this evening will be dedicated to this discussion, so let's try to... Try to keep our questions now, just in terms of what would be helpful for us, for them to know what we would like to know for later tonight, if that's okay.
Well, I don't have to ask a question. I just think that's the main one you're going to get, so maybe I'll let you practice your answer now, is the data doesn't show 820 needing five lanes at least through 2040. So I guess, could you explain why the decision was made to go to five lanes without the data supporting it?
Can I identify that as exactly the kind of question that...
That should be...
Yeah, I mean, I think what, maybe what, I mean, unless there's strong objections, that's letting you and the others know that that's a question we would want to discuss tonight is probably better than trying to get an answer right now.
I don't want to extend any of that.
I think we'll never get to the bottom of that, at least in the next, and we only have three or four minutes. Yeah, that's fine.
I've been reading the transportation master plan. That was sent out February 27th, but I assume there's a more updated plan that came after a planning commission meeting?
At a planning meeting, we have updated it. We have updated it based upon their recommendations.
Oh, I just need to find that.
So it includes a little more robust active transportation network in the southwest of Provo.
Okay.
I will say, my senior engineer is here now to answer that question related to 820 North. I'm going to own that.
He will not be available later.
He will not be here tonight.
I'll take it out. So my name is Charles Allen. Like Vern said, I might look senior. I might sound senior, it's at least how my voice cries or something. We talked, the question's a little bit about data, and why do we have this project if the data doesn't show it? Well, there's multiple reasons for a project. There can be a capacity issue because volumes exceed capacity. There could also be a network connectivity issue, and there could also be a future planning and getting ahead of the game and making sure we're prepared for future changes issue. All three of those combined for the need for this 820 North project. The volumes are getting there. There's an east-west connectivity need in Provo City, particularly to the west side, and this is one of those critical corridors that can provide that opportunity to move east-west. Additionally, this project is, has been identified in a lot of previous plans that have taken a much more focused look at the corridor, such as the 800 North study done...
Three years ago?
2016.
Yeah.
So, and that looked in more detail about the quarter, particularly with the potential of a new interchange at I-15.
So I need some more details then, in order to support it, right? Because I have, my district in particular, I've got to answer to these guys.
Yeah.
And so I have to have good, solid answers, but to just say, you know, well, we're looking in the future, which is essentially what you just said, what is, what are we looking at then? Because you mentioned connectivity. I mean, when I look, I poured through these, the maps, and, you know, I see if we do 820 North, how it, you know, I've highlighted what it impacts, what it doesn't, and there's just nothing, you know, university's going to fail regardless. Center Street's still going to have problems at the, heading east on the on-ramp. I'm just not seeing it. But what's, unless there's like an inside game here, like, not inside game, but is there more information I need to know? I'm just saying, the maps with the numbers and the supporting information doesn't show it. And I'm asking you because you're here and you're not going to be here tonight, so I know that this would be a discussion for tonight, but I guess I just, I would prefer to have answers if I could. So I can tell you where 820 North started. So this study that we started doing was started back, we were looking at our current master plan. It shows a bridge improvements, the existing bridge at 9th West. This study's, that's where it kind of started, because we were looking to maybe go look for funding to start reconstruction of that bridge.
Right.
It has issues, it's getting near the end of its life. And so for us, we needed to look at what that, initially, what does that bridge need to be? If we're going to expend those kind of funds on a bridge, what does that need to be? Is a three-lane section sufficient?
Right. We don't want to build a bridge and then in 20 years have to rebuild it.
Correct, and we don't want to build a bridge that is three lanes, that may be only supported by three lanes, but even 50 years from now, we need a five-lane, we could have built a five-lane bridge. So that's where that study started. This is where it came from, but we expanded it. Let's look at the whole corridor. At the time, UDOT was starting to look at doing an interchange study somewhere between Center Street and University Parkway. They are going to kick that fully off environmental assessment, well, environmental impact study in the next two or two to six months, had a discussion with. So they will be starting, it's going to be at least a two-year process. So that will be coming. But we needed to make sure that we had enough of the width of the road, because if we build that bridge, regardless if it was two, five, it's going to impact properties, you know, homes that's five, six, 700 feet east and west of that bridge. So you're looking at a few thousand feet, regardless of what's done, just the reconstruction of that bridge. So we want to take a holistic view of it. We want to make sure we build a big enough bridge, and I think that's some of the things that you said, is look at it holistically. We build a five-lane bridge, that's where we, there's where we would want to go. So that's, again, just kind of some background there, where that came from.
Yeah.
So it looked at, you know, different scenarios that could happen, because we're looking at 2040. It's shown on our Phase 2. It's not in our Phase 1 plan, it's in our longer-range plan. When that happens, we don't know. We obviously understand that this is probably going to have to get re-looked at again, depending on what happens, what becomes of the state study, their environmental study. Absolutely, this will need to be re-looked. That could change a lot of things.
Yeah.
And I would say, yeah, we want to, okay, let's look at this again, whatever happens. We have a lot of regional, MAG has done a significant update on their regional plan. They just adopted the 2050 plan of all the projects in the county. And so that wasn't fully in this document either. It was looking at the 2040 plan. Now we have the 2050 plan, a completely new revised model that they've completely overhauled. So that is, so I say, yes, we need to, but based on the current information that we have, we feel that it supports a five-lane section through there. Because some of the issues, we want to make sure that we preserve a corridor through here, right? We have, you had recent developments coming that say, you know, we want to look at something along this corridor. We need to understand what that is so that we can preserve that. We don't want to shortchange ourselves and say, oh, we're here, but we really need to be here in five years.
Will you be at the meetings tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I want to, you're, the only one who's not going to be here, and Shane, I know you have lots to say about this, but we can talk about this tonight. Any other quick questions? Because we're...
I just wonder how important it for us, is it for us to consider kind of these placeholders that put a dollar amount on east-west connectivity from an impact fee standpoint? That was something that I, you know, when you bring that up, yeah, we need better connectivity, even if it's not 820. How important is it for us as a city to have that somewhere, that at least the cost of something that we do... How important is, is it for us as a city to have that somewhere, that at least the cost of something that we do in order to make sure and accurately charge impact fees to new construction and, so I, and, and if it's easy to change, you know, then do cities do that from a planning perspective to just make sure you get their impact fees right? Like, I don't know the answer to that. I'm too late to this. Come in.
So impact fees are good for six years. You'll see that, collective, you got to spend them within the six years. So you'll see that the 820 North corridor, only the segments that are in Phase 1 were collecting impact fees as a city.
That 75 million is not a placeholder for impact fees at this point.
No, it's not.
No. Yeah, that's important.
Obviously, this proposal, if you did the full expansion, it's going to cause a lot of pain. And so, Charles, you're not going to be here tonight, and Shane will be here.
Absolutely.
Are you prepared to talk about why there's such a compelling need to the full expansion of the 820 North? And why other alternatives are just inadequate? Okay, because that would be key.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Silver. So I had a question, how much the design of the interchange plays into the need to support traffic on 820? I've seen three different ideas for the interchange. I mean, years ago, they were talking about maybe 1700 more. Now it seems like we're focused a little more on maybe it's going to be at 800. But there was another idea at one point that it would be a collector road that would funnel out to three different places.
So I can tell you, yes, yes, all three of those. So in their study, the purpose and need has not been defined by the state yet. That, they've already completed the Phase 1 of their study, which is to gather all the existing data to get the model so that it's showing correctly with what the existing traffic conditions are. They're there. Now they're just waiting to finalize some other vital, other documents. But yes, they will be looking at all options. So all options will be on the table, and they will be, and that's why that process is going to take a significant amount of time. And all those alternatives, collectors, distributors, you know, single-point accesses, those were, different locations, those will all be looked at. So there's no, I just want to make sure there's no predetermined location. It's not necessarily predetermined at 820 by any means.
That's a point worth making tonight.
Absolutely.
One last question for me, if I might, Mr. Silver. The, there's a price tag of $75 billion, this, for the full expansion. Where does that money come from?
That money would come from, of course, because there's no way that we would be able to fund, city funds would be able to. It would either be, we would look either at phasing, and that money would come from, we have our Mountain Land Association of Governments from MAG, which they're kind of the warehouser of regional funds, which includes federal, state, and county funds. There's a specific process that we go through.
It will come through May?
It would, most likely, in order to do a project this size that we have, for instance, Lakeview Parkway, larger projects, those regionally significant projects are, there's money set aside, federal, state, county, for specifically for these. There's a specific selection process that needs to go.
At MAG?
At MAG, that we go through, through a TAP committee, a technical advisory committee, a regional planning committee that consists of all the mayors that end up kind of voting where that money should go based on the need and the significance of that project.
Does the 75 million include the bridge and the interstate exchange?
Yes. That was, again, that's a high-level concept. That's not very, very high-level.
It includes the interchange?
No, no, not the interchange.
Not the interchange.
No. And that's where we want to make sure that is not in our, there's no interchange. We do not have a near plan for an interchange there.
But it includes the bridge.
Includes the reconstruction of the bridge at 900 West, yes.
Mr. Harding.
So I appreciate, I appreciate the update, expanding the active network, active transportation network in West Provo. You know, I'm glad that was caught kind of towards the end and that fix made. When I look at the street network, the biggest hole that I see, and I don't know if it was just missed or, anyway, it seems like a hole to me, is that east-west connectivity at 600 South. We have it to the east, we have it to the west, and right pass, right, right near I-15, it dies. And I think, particularly since we've got the airport to the west, we've got intermobile hubs to the east, I would have liked to have seen, or I would like to see the transportation master plan, nothing else, just identify that as, as a problem that we're going to consider solutions for in the future. Because I do think that is a hole. That, that was on, on the version I reviewed, that was on page 16. That map was on page 16.
And I think, I got a comment from this from, I think, one of the neighborhood chairs at our last open house had mentioned that. And I kind of say the same thing.
Can we talk more about it this evening?
We can. And I think that is something, I, I don't think necessarily show any capacity issues in that location right now. Maybe it's a more mobility, east-west mobility. And I think that's something that we could look at in the next update. I think there's going to be a few things that we need to look at substantially in the next update. And I think that, I told her, as I told her, I think that would be one, that would be one of those list of items that kind of come from this that we need to look at, that, because it would be impactful with, you know, getting across I-15 and those things. And that would still kind of have to have a discussion of how that would impact and how the state, what would be some of their input on that if we were to do something like that.
Okay. All right. We thank you for your being here, and for those who were able to stay for this evening, thank you. I think I catch your name, sorry.
I'm Charles, yeah.
Thank you for being here, and we appreciate the chance to ask some questions, but we'll look forward to having a more robust discussion tonight. We have, Robert Mills has agreed that his items can come this evening as well, so I think we do have a request for a closed meeting. Mr. Jones, you want to explain?
Yes. I believe there are three topics, and those topics include sale and purchase of property and character incompetence of an individual, all of which are permitted reasons for having closed meetings. So it'd be appropriate to move to closed meetings.
All right. So we have a motion for closing. Is there no more second invite? So, and, who do we vote on?
Yes.
All in favor? Yes. Okay. Sorry, I'm just still a little rusty in that black backflip shirt.